Call our meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, for those of you that have not been with us before, our standard operating procedure is we look to our city staff, our planner and our engineer, to explain the individual projects, look to the applicant to provide their input, and bring it back to the commission, we deliberate, consider what's been presented, and make a decision. The first item on our agenda, actually, we're going to change our agenda up a little bit. The first item that we have listed on the applications is the request of the property owner at 684 Falmouth Drive, and we're going to slot that in at the end of the agenda for today's meeting. The first order of item of business is the review and the consideration and approval of our minutes from our last meeting on June 10th. And so I look to the commission for a motion.
I move that we accept the minutes as distributed. Second?
Two seconds, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, our first item then is the planning commission will consider the request of the property owner at 563 Chase Lane for approval to install a front yard motor court piers and for use approval of a pergola as an accessory building. And what I'd ask the commission is, as we're going through this, let's let the planner and the engineer make their presentation, and then we can ask our questions, and then move on to the applicant. Eric?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. My name is Eric Peach with Giffords Webster, the city's planning consultant. Our first item for discussion today is 563 Chase Lane. This is for planning commission consideration of motor court piers and accessory building, that being a pergola. Site is located along Chase Lane within the A3 zoning district. The site is currently under development, but the current proposal is for a pergola. Again, that's an accessory building, motor court piers, and then just with the proposed added coverage and analysis of the landscape open space was done as well. So doing the yard determination graphic, you have the home under development here. We established the front yard in green in the front, rear yard in orange in the back, and then the resulting two side yards in yellow. So what's being proposed is this pergola structure here. The ordinance requires accessory buildings to be placed 20 feet from the primary structure. The dimension distance setback separation is 20 feet. It's within the rear yard. Because there's no pool affiliated with this, this accessory building cannot be considered a pool house. If it was, it would not necessarily require planning commission's approval. But because it's in the rear yard, it requires landscape screening and the use. That's not either a garage or a pool house requires planning commission approval. And then moving towards the front of the site, there's two motor court piers. The ordinance allows for these, but with the subject to consideration and approval by the planning commission. So with that, we look at the proposed landscape screening plan. Again, the house is under development, so what we show here is the, I'm not getting the laser quite. Here's the pergola. The distance again from the house is 20 feet. The immediate screening is 30-inch Hicks U shrub, but there's significant screening on either side of the property. And then along the back, you can see here labeled trees and brush along the backside of the property. So the site where the proposed pergola is located will be screened by existing foliage as well as proposed Norway spruce on the west side of the property. And then over here on the right side, you see the eight-foot arborvitae and Norway spruce. The applicant provided some really nice quality color rendering, so the next few slides will just walk you through what the visual impact would be for the pergola. Again, the separation here is 20 feet, so there's no variance request for anything closer. This would be a view looking out towards the backyard from the house. So a pretty standard pergola-type structure. Here's the immediate screening around the structure, the building. But again, the emphasis is on the existing and some enhancement to the perimeter landscaping. And as you can see here where the driveway comes up, there's some screening to block views of the pergola from that vantage point, and then from the backyard looking forward. And then some nighttime perspectives. Then moving to the front of the property, you have the existing driveway do a loop. Motor court shown here, and then the two motor court piers on either side. I believe they're 30 inches in height. The ordinance allows for 36 inches, so they're lower than what the ordinance allows, shown here on this dimension diagram. There will be no additional features or items that would be on top that would exceed the 36-inch allowance. So it would be just these piers, columns, that would complement the design of the existing house. So that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer, or if a city engineer would like to add to the presentation.
Good afternoon, Leah Michaels with HRC. Here, just going to talk a little bit about drainage on this property. We've seen a couple of these homes come through recently in the Chase Lane neighborhood. So just to reiterate that, Chase Lane was built with its own stormwater management system. So they do have their detention basins with storm sewer in the roadway to capture any runoff from the proposed homes that are in the full development. So with the pergola project, we don't see that this will have a major impact on storm water. They do have two swales proposed on either side of the home that will direct water onto the road towards Chase Lane, where I mentioned there are existing storm structures. And then the outer limits of the rear yard are higher than kind of the inner limits, so the storm water is anticipated to stay on site in the back. So we don't have any other engineering items. I just wanted to point to some of the drainage that will be accommodated with this project.
Thanks, Leah. So, anyone have any questions? We're here. We're here, Eric. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm just curious, according to this picture, the pergola extends beyond the wall of the house. So, looks like it's almost halfway.
Oh, to the side?
Yeah, it should be parallel. This one? Yeah. No.
So yeah, you're right, on the side. Yeah, so you're saying plain on the side of the house, it's sticking out a certain dimension?
Instead of being parallel with it.
Right. I see what you're saying. Yes, I don't know if we have an exact dimension of what that is. The applicant's here, do you understand the question?
Yeah.
There's no necess-
Well, I guess we can, maybe we'll invite him back rather than-
Okay.
Can you answer whether it is lined up with the side of the house?
It does not appear to be. It looks like it is sticking out further to the west or to the left than the existing house.
So the issue, just for everyone's benefit, is whether or not it's screened here, right? So maybe we can broach that issue with the applicant. Because it doesn't have to line up necessarily as long as it's screened.
Correct.
So we got to make sure it's screened.
Yes.
Well, the top part wouldn't be lined, wouldn't be screened.
Well, there's-
So from the road, you could see it.
They have the arborvitae.
For screening detail, there's eight-foot arborvitae along the driveway, the end of the driveway.
Right, I can see that.
Uh-huh. And then back here, there's, it's lower screening, obviously. It's more of hedge and hydrangea, but the intent would be to show the screening from the street more in line with where the driveway ends. I don't know if we have a, so here, this is the screening that is intended to block views from the street. These are eight-foot high arborvitae.
So that can be a question here, whether or not the screening by the planning commission is deemed acceptable.
Adequate. Correct, yes.
Other questions for Eric or Leah?
Well, one of the things, when I was looking at this, and then I was looking at this, that concerns me is the disclaimer in the left-hand corner, which says, "These are for visual purposes only and may not be an accurate representation of selections, colors, and finishes." So is this not what it's going to look like? Does that mean they have the right, do they have the right to put whatever they want?
Whatever's on the plan, they should, it depends what the planning commission approves or doesn't approve, but if they have something on the plan that the planning commission approves, they have to comply with that.
Even though they have a disclaimer on here?
Yes, even though they have a disclaimer on there.
Okay. That'll help. So I echo Commissioner Giffords' comments about, I think, if it's not sufficient, if they don't have tall enough, arborvitae only get so tall and then they fall, they split in half. So I'd rather have it be something that is going to stay there and be high enough to hide the, or move the pergola over just a little bit.
Well, actually, it could move, be moved very easily and be lining up with the little patio in front of it.
Yeah, and then we wouldn't have to worry about screening.
Yeah, so what the rule is, is whether or not it's properly screened from adjacent properties, which would include the right-of-way too. So I guess is, the commission looks at this, it's a matter of whether or not that screening, it wouldn't just be the right-of-way, it's from the adjacent properties too, so the next-door neighbors.
Okay. The next-door neighbors can't see it either, is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay. So it has to be next-door neighbors or from the front of the house? Is that what you're saying?
Neither.
Yeah, so it's, and it's your definition, properly screened from adjacent properties.
I guess that's one. My second concern is we've had problems with this side. Will, you've been on the planning commission with me long enough, that we've had some other buildings on this Chase Lane here along the back that we've dealt with, maybe some flooding, because I know you live behind it, right? Is this far enough away, and do you experience any of that there?
No.
Not that corner, just it was another lot, couple other lots?
Yeah, and the flooding was years ago, and I'm not aware of any significant issue with that anymore.
Okay, good.
Is it good?
Yeah, I just, as long as the applicant knows that these are as-is, these are not, they can change it, and I'd kind of like to have the building moved and then, it's not that, it looks like it's only, what, a foot?
Well, we need to find that out, if the person who's constructing it can answer that question.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I wonder, Eric, if you could, do you have the overall view that you can show the planning commission? You know, do you have neighboring properties? Like if you're standing in the street, where would you have to be in the street to see that?
Like vantage points?
Yeah.
I don't think I have any.
Because it's a corner lot, I just don't know how impactful that is.
Actually, Eric, if you go back to that other one that you were just on?
You certainly can see it from neighboring properties.
Where do you see it from the area?
But I just don't know, I can't tell. I was over there, and I recall it was in a corner lot, and I don't know, standing in the street, if I'd be able to see it unless I was quite a distance away.
Yeah, because it's a circular drive.
Yeah.
So the angle is such.
The angle, so I guess what I'm saying is the angle might help, and being seen-
What you look at the area?
I notice that too.
Okay. No, no, keep going.
Do you want a plan?
No, the overall area.
Yeah.
It shows the adjacent lots.
Oh.
It just doesn't show the lot.
Yeah, of course it does show the-
It does show the new house.
So it's that lot, so it doesn't show the house, but you can sort of, I guess, gauge maybe?
So if you moved it a few feet, I think you'd still be able to see it going down the street, is my point. I'm not sure how much I'll bet, maybe the screening will be more important than moving it a few feet.
You know, I think Commissioner, Dave, you make a good point.
Okay.
That the screening here is probably as important, and I guess maybe we should review the screening and whether or not that's tall enough. Right now, you have a row of arborvitae, and is that sufficient screening to block this?
I would suggest a row of pines that are, you know, you call it scattered or if-
Well, yeah.
Staggered, thank you. The word didn't want to come out.
Okay.
The commission is not fond of walls of trees that don't look in natural arrangement. We prefer a natural arrangement.
I'll tell you what, what we'll do is we'll listen, maybe we'll let the applicant give us an overview of their idea. Is the applicant here?
Yeah, Anthony, sheena from Sapphire.
Do you want to come up here, Anthony?
Come up.
Well, do you, do you have comment, or?
Yeah, I mean, I can speak from here.
Well, actually, why don't you come up here, just so we can, because we're on a camera now, and so we'll, so we'll be able to see you.
Great. So, this is actually one of our most minimalistic designs we have done. Obviously, you guys have seen me here before. It's really only just a pergola. So the overall height of the structure, the pergola, is nine foot maximum. Those arb start out at eight feet, they'll grow to 20 to 30, if not controlled. So, we've done many projects that were more extensive than this, and they've been approved. So this will be screened in a matter of a season, so.
With the arborvitae?
Yeah.
Are you doing the landscaping and the pergola? Are you building, you designed both?
I didn't do the design, our landscape designers did the design.
But you're building, your company is doing both.
Yes.
Craig?
In discussion with the owner, was there any consideration given to moving the pergola over a bit so it lines up precisely?
From an aesthetic standpoint and dimensional standpoint, they have it lined up, the landscape designers lined it up based on their overall design. Doesn't have to be congruent to the side of the house. They shifted it based on how they felt it should-
I'm actually thinking about, if you were an eagle flying over the site.
I wish.
If you were, wouldn't it be logical to the eye to move it over just a bit?
Perspective.
In your humble, professional opinion, mainly humble.
Not necessarily. Sometimes it can be, but you know, we-
But do you see my point?
Yeah, I do, yeah, sure. I defer to the landscape designers.
It's illogical, it's illogical, at least as it's presented in this beautiful colored photograph. This doesn't make sense, and I agree with Connie. It seems a little bit out of-
Well, you're basing it on the side of the house and not necessarily the paving path.
The lot is pie-shaped, Anthony, isn't it? Remember, you're an eagle.
Yes.
Frank, I would agree that because it's pie-shaped, it is a natural bump out. As the, as the shape of the block gets wider, the pergola.
Correct.
If it was a big monster building, I would feel differently, but I'm not in control of its location.
Eric, can you show us, can you get us onto the landscape plan in a second? Sort of the topo of this site?
Anthony, I have a question, you don't have to answer it, but it seems to me that they have this set up for years down the line, being able to put a pool in. Is that something that-
I don't think they're interested.
To put it way over there? Because that would make sense, having it where it is, if they were planning a pool at a later date.
Well, they'd like to have that option if necessary, right?
Yeah.
Or the future owner.
Or future owner.
There's quite a bit of backyard, and that's not a problem. Put a phone right here.
So as we're looking at the screening for the pergola, where are those arborvitae around the pergola?
Around the pergola?
Yeah, because that's the feature that we're screening.
Could you zoom in on that a little bit?
Well, there's just a row there on the bottom, see, eight-foot arborvitae. Yeah.
Just from the street, it's not, it's not-
It's not close to the pergola.
It's not screened from the neighbors.
These are the arborvitae, the eight-foot arborvitae along the edge of the driveway. So from the street, you look back towards the pergola, it would be obstructed by these eight-foot arborvitae and the-
So to help this conversation along a little bit, so what the ordinance says is, when we put in a structure like this, I'll just read the words, the structure is intended to be properly screened from adjacent properties. So, the structure's in the back, and there was suggestion that maybe you throw in a couple of added pieces of landscaping, and I guess you could suggest that the Norway spruce that you're putting in are providing some of that.
And the existing landscaping.
Pardon me?
And the existing trees.
Well, there's no existing trees on this site now. I mean, it's barren. So there's, there's trees in the back, but there's no trees. So maybe people are going to feel a little bit more comfortable if, I heard the suggestion made, of maybe scare a couple more of, maybe you put those Norway spruces in to provide some more screening to the structure. Are you trying-
Closer to the structure?
Well, just so that, yeah, so that it's scared about there.
Couple more Norway spruces.
Yeah. That's what the commission seems to be suggesting here.
I mean, how many do you want though? Because you're saying a couple, that means two.
Well, okay.
Three, fifty-three.
Well, maybe, you guys pick, you're the commission. I'm trying to, I'm trying to move the discussion along, because right now, as I see it, we've got arborvitae that are, eight arborvitae, which are really not close to the structure. And the intent is to screen the structure from adjacent properties, which would be the house next door, and the road, and whether or not those, those arb's are going to cover that, I guess is questionable. And maybe you don't even have to, there was question about where you locate it. Maybe whether or not it's a couple feet one way or another is less important if you put in a couple more spruces so that you've got screening. Does that make sense?
I'm sure we can-
So, what does the commission think? You want to throw out some ideas of what your expectation is?
Five spruces.
Okay, I hear, okay.
I'd settle for, I'd settle for three.
I know.
I would too.
I like spruces.
But I would put the, put them closer to the structure, you know, like right in front of where all those yellow bushes things are.
Maybe where the word hydrangea?
Yes.
Okay, sort of like in that area?
Right, just screen it.
I don't think that would work because of the size of spruce and proximity to the structure and the way it would grow over time.
Where would you put, suggest?
I would keep it along the property edge. I mean, it provides the same amount of screening as it would closer or further away. You're going to, I think it'd become an issue later on.
Eric, I need your point. You can talk about right here.
Yeah.
Actually, I think if you're going to do screening, it should be closer to the front of the house. Because that's all woods back there where you just pointed.
Does the woods come in that far?
So, yeah, it does. So, no, where you, that's all woods back there.
Yeah, but trees are, will lose their leaves.
Yeah, you can't even see through there, so.
In the winter?
Yeah, it's pretty thick. So I think maybe in that, I'm just making a suggestion.
From the tree line forward is what I'm hearing, right? The tree line-
And wrapping it into the front, so that when you're on the road?
Can't see it.
You don't see it. Because that's the right-of-way, that's the road, and so if you maybe disperse them, sort of offset them between, you've got four existing or planned spruces, and so if you put in another one, you know, put them in between there so they're offset, and you'll accomplish some of that screening. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, they're going to, they're going to calculate the mature growth of these trees, the designers will. So yeah, we can stagger the spruce, two on this side, two on that side, or all on this left side?
I'm not sure what you see from the other side. I think that house is way over.
Well, there's the place structure right there.
We could put all four on this left side, which is fine, which is probably more needed on this left side.
Yeah. So what does the commission think?
I have a question. So yes, it's very minimalistic of the beautiful stuff you've brought to us. We're looking at a plan without exactly seeing where the other homes are and what they're looking at, and we're just talking about the tree. Can you, do you have anything in your, in your paperwork? Nothing was put in the packet that shows where the back of the other houses are? What kind of landscape, do they have, and how about more importantly, do they have trees in there? That, that can act as a, that's-
It's pretty barren.
That's an old, that's an old, that's an old picture?
Commissioner, what?
Well, I'm just saying, we're talking about, we're talking about this in an uninformed vacuum, because when we're at the site, we couldn't see exactly where the pergola would be in relation to this house that was on, that's on the left. So now that we're looking at it, can you point on there, on the screen, where the pergola is going to be on the subject site?
I mean, the easiest way is to actually look at the landscape plan, you can see it in relation.
No, no, I'm looking at that, and that's, that's, I'm looking at this, at this thing. If we're looking at, we have the backdrop of the forest in the back, and all of that. But since we don't have an updated picture of where the house is on that side.
I plan one, kind of sounds good.
And did you, so we're going to talk about those trees.
Yeah, so those trees on that side are there, is what they're looking at. Can we, since these people aren't going to see it at all, can we place the trees from their backyard, their home? They're sitting in the back of their house, they're not looking at them, sitting in the pergola.
I'm sure they'll put a patio or something.
If you, if you look at your plan, which is under the packet, you can see the outline of the homes. So you can, you should be able to tell where the pergola is and where the impact is for both properties. I think the impact is on the left, really, there's no impact on the right.
Yeah, I don't see an impact.
I agree.
Eric, do you have, do you have that plan right there, up there?
This is that, so it's just colored with the layers of color, and then on the left side, you can see where the existing house is very clearly.
Okay, so existing house is there.
Yeah, but that doesn't show any landscaping or patios or anything they're doing, so if they have an extended patio, they'll, right there.
What are all, where are all of those of, of trees that are on the, on the property line? That's, is that this neighbor's, this neighbor's?
Yes.
Okay. Are they proposed trees?
No, they're, they're not.
Eric, can you do this for Catherine? Can you, can you point to where the house is on the right-hand side?
Well, it's the left that we're concerned with.
Right, well, so that's, so that's the outline, where's the back end of it? So that house really isn't going to have much of a view of this at all?
No.
Okay, so.
That's why he's suggesting putting the trees up here, so that it would be, it would just-
Yeah, so if you offset them with those trees that they're proposing- Yeah, so if you offset them with those trees that they're proposing to add right now, if you add another four or five spruces in there, it's gonna diffuse any view?
So, with the house on the right, you were here last month, you guys approved that S-561 Chase.
Actually, I, I think that's the house on the left that we approved last month. It was, trust me. So, and there's, there's no vegetation in the back right now. So, if you add these trees in there, if you add four or five spruces back there, that's gonna screen this. The house on the right-hand side is not gonna have a view of this pergola really to speak of, and the views principally are gonna be on the left-hand side, and right now, those arbors really aren't gonna do a whole lot. They'll do a little bit, but not a whole lot, and so if you add in four or five more spruces, I think you're gonna accomplish what you need to accomplish. But I don't wanna...
You have to keep in mind this line here. The difference, the distance between the left edge of the pergola and the lot line is ninety-seven feet on top of that, plus the distance to the house to the left. So, there is significant space there in addition to that, right? So, I think, you know...
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're right. Your statement is that, well, I don't know, I think it's gonna be crowding in, is not really a...
There's plenty of room.
An accurate statement with a hundred feet. So, I, I would love to be on board with this. I think it's gonna be beautiful. I like your minimalistic stuff. I like all of that. I would like to have at least one tree in the peach area, parallel with side, right above side, so that, so that that's not seen from the road. Those two trees act along with the arborvitae so that you don't see that from the road. Yeah, right up there, right in there. I want, I want a tree there. And then the rest to take into account if the neighbor is, has a pool in their backyard, and let's just say you're doing the landscaping at their house, how would you, how would, where would you put those trees so that they're not gonna be seeing that landscape? And that's benefiting your client, but it's also benefiting a future resident that we have just as much obligation to, to not say we approved of something not, just because they weren't living there at the time. So, the other ones, the other four that they're calling for to be put in here to cut off all angle from the back of their, of their, from their house.
So, you're proposing four on this left side?
I'm proposing five. One, one above side yard. And to block from the road because of the weird angle there. And, and the others to take into account your hundred, or ninety-seven feet there from the, from the edge to the edge of the pergola, so that that neighbor is not looking at their pergola.
So, where it reads rear yard pergola? From that point all the way down?
Well, if you're, you're standing in the back of that house, which I'm sure you can, and you are pretending that you are the landscape architect for that house, and you're putting in one of your more famous backyards, that they do not see the pergola. And that has to be, and I would love to be on board with that, but that, it's not like, well, the designers disagreed with that? No, they, they, they have to agree with that.
And we can incorporate it, sure, based on what you're...
Yeah, yeah. In order to, for, for me to have my approval, it's not, well, the designers will consider the trees? No, the designers, the designers have to give us this for consideration of the, of the people in the neighborhood and also this person just on this side.
So, add another five?
Five on that side.
Five on this side, one directly...
To block the, the roads?
Facing forward.
Yeah, as you're driving in the road, yes. That's mine, that's...
Okay. Is everyone on board with that? Now, we still need to listen to anyone that might be in the audience, but I'd like to...
I've got a question.
Okay, okay.
Just a quick question for the, what's your name? Anthony, I got a question. Your drawing here on the landscape plan, it's pretty hard to read, but it says, so the subject property is unit eight, and the property on the left is unit nine. And on the landscape plan, it says on unit nine, proposed evergreens, proposed evergreen trees in neighboring property. You've got, can you go back to the other? And you've got a line of, of, I don't know, depicted evergreens. Does that, what does your plan mean? Those aren't there now and they're proposed, and you just decided to draw them in on speculation?
No, it's not on speculation. The landscape designer deploys properties.
Okay.
So, that was landscape design, and if we would...
The same landscape, the same person did both?
So, it's, so it's, it's, it's approved evergreens on that plan? I mean, the way that you say it here, it's ambiguous to me what that means. I mean, is there an approved plan for unit nine that incorporates those evergreens? Okay.
So, there already is a row of our evergreens belonging?
There will be?
Or there will be?
On the other property?
Yeah, I don't have a plan for it yet, I haven't called, but not yet.
But there will be.
I know they're not there now, but...
If I could offer? So, that site was actually, that's the one that we reviewed two months ago. And that's the site where they wanted to put a fence around the entire site? If you guys remember?
Yes.
And there was, there was a lack of agreement, and we didn't approve the fencing.
That's an out-of-state person, correct?
There you go. So, that was that site. So, they had that proposed evergreen screening to screen the fence. Now, whether or not they're gonna put in all of that now? You're keeping that plan? Okay?
But, and, and you're the designer for that unit nine?
Yeah, I'm not personally the designer, but yes, our designers. And that was part of the discussion, because your approval did not negate a treat. It still required a treat, but only denied the fence. So, we're sticking with the plan.
Okay. So, all that screening is, that's gotta go in by what we approved.
That's the approved site plan, so with no offense, but that's the landscaping component.
Everything's staying the same except for that.
Okay, got it. Thank you, thank you for that clarification, nice memory.
Well, given that, I'd be comfortable with two or three more, just so it's screened from the street, but...
Well, you have to have an odd number. It's gotta be a tier of five.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna ask, is there anyone in the audience that has comment on this? Okay, so there's no comments in the audience. So, maybe if what we can do is settle on, we've, we've agreed that we're gonna add some spruces. I've heard, I've heard five, and I thought with, with Catherine's comment, you laid these out, so...
It's a nineteen-foot as, it's nineteen feet long, and even if they have their arborvitae on the side, the trees still have to block that, so...
So, Anthony, I think you underst, you recited what the commissioner explained, so you're on the same page. We've just gotta make sure that our minutes reflect what we agreed to. And I think, to summarize...
You kinda want one right about there?
Block?
I think she said where the word side was.
Above side, no.
Okay, okay.
Above side.
Okay, there you go. And then the other four intermingle between, sort of dispersed between the other ones, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do you understand?
Yeah, so you want one obstructing this front end view?
Mm-hmm.
And then the rest get it up the slide?
Yes.
Okay?
All in favor?
Okay, okay. So, is everyone in agreement? Any discussion about the piers, or is everyone comfortable with the piers that are proposed for the front of the home?
They're quite close to the house, so I'm comfortable with them.
Okay? Okay, so...
And they're short.
Is, is someone wanna make a motion, or?
I'll make a motion.
Okay?
Sure. That the commission approves the piers as presented, and through lively discussion and with intercession with the landscape architect, we all agree that five spruces... Did we talk about the height for the spruces? I didn't hear anybody say the height.
I guess it'd be...
I'd like to be at least eight.
Minimum of eight feet. They grow for the year anyway.
Okay. Eight-foot, uh, black spruces, or blue spruces, excuse me, to be added to the plans that we've been looking at, and everybody is in concurrence.
On the west side of the house.
On the left side of the house.
Do they have to be blue spruces, or?
Nope.
No.
Because that's a particular, okay, so they, just...
Eight-foot, eight-foot spruces.
I leave that discretion to people.
Can I just, I'm sorry, this disclaimer bugs me.
Can I just add to that motion that, that the plantings are as presented, not...
In the photographs.
In the photographs, yes. Is, is that right, Mr. Attorney? Can, is that the proper legal way to say that, as presented?
Yes.
As presented, not with a disclaimer?
Yes.
Okay.
So, as presented in the photos?
Not subject to the disclaimer.
That's what I was looking for. Did you get that, Amy?
Okay, so, so you're gonna put that in your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion?
And I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, or are we happy with that motion?
Well, I just wanna make sure that the, for the minutes and the location of the spruces deserves sufficient specificity for the minutes that we're not gonna have a problem with the designer and the landscaping location of those new...
Would the commission recommend that I review the plan and make sure?
Yes, I would.
Appropriately experienced review?
So amended.
So amended.
Second.
I lost my voice.
Okay, any other comment, question? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
So, the next item is the request of the property owner at 534 Hunter's Crossing for approval to install a side yard fireplace in pergola. Another pergola for you.
Another pergola, yes, sir. So, 534 Hunter's Crossing, this is for a rear yard proposed pergola and a side yard wall and fireplace. So, the applicant is here when we get time later on to discuss the overall project. We had met with this particular applicant a few months ago, going through an application for building permit, and it was determined that because the requirement for accessory buildings to have to be either attached to the home or separated from the home by no less than twenty feet, we ran into some issues prior to getting too far along with the proposal. And so, initially, the applicant had proposed to connect the pergola structure to the house, and I'll get into more detail momentarily, but we determined that by applying the algebraic setback to that home addition, which again is just the pergola, that the setback was not far enough. And so, there was a lot of inner workings with the algebraic setback analysis, you know, talking with the applicant about the challenges of going forward with a ZBA application for a variance request. And then it was discussed whether or not the pergola building would be able to comply at twenty feet and what the dimensional standards and context would be for that. And so, we moved forward with an application for a detached pergola and leaving the algebraic setback analysis to the side. So, giving an overall view of the site, this is a parcel that's located along the southeast side of Hunter's Crossing near the cul-de-sac terminus. It's zoned A4, so the A4 district standards apply. As you can see here, the wetlands map shows that a significant portion of the rear yard is in fact within the one-hundred-year floodplain. So, the existing house shown here is where the proposed pergola in the backside of the house is proposed. And so, by going out twenty feet, you're getting closer and closer to the hundred-yard floodplain. And so, this is just a more zoomed-in version, if we need to refer back to an aerial image. It shows existing tree coverage further to the southeast in the backside of the lot. Looking at the overall standards for the A4 district, what's highlighted in purple requires planning commission approval, that being the pergola as a use, that's not a garage or a pool house. The location of the pergola in the side yard, due to the configuration of the lot, we'll show you the yard determination graphic in just a second. It's behind the house with the intention of being in the backyard, but just so happens to fall within the side yard. That requires planning commission consideration. And then, yeah, so both of those standards, oh, I'm sorry, the fireplace as an accessory structure incorporated into the pergola building, we identify as an accessory structure that because it's also in the side yard would require planning commission consideration. And then, again, the setback from the house is required to be twenty feet, but what's being proposed is four feet. So, the yard determination graphic, Hunter's Crossing is down here on the lower part of the screen. North is to the southwest. The side yard is on either side of the home, and then obviously the rear yard. And because of the configuration of the rear lot line, that's what causes that dip to create the side yard location, even though it's behind, the activity is being proposed behind the house. So, initially, this has always been where the pergola, location of the pergola was proposed. And so, it was either going to be attached to the home, or, you know, the discussion of the requirement being twenty feet off was also part of the discussion. It's also in close proximity to the twenty-foot setback on the side of the property, and then the hundred-year floodplain is shown here in turquoise. So, just to give you a perspective of a dimensional context, the pergola and the fireplace, which is that little rectangle there on the edge, is proposed right up to the twenty-foot setback, but there is no encroachment to that setback requirement. And then, just to give you an idea of the algebraic analysis, we spent a lot of time going through this exercise with the applicant, and they were very diligent with getting us what we needed to make the appropriate determination that if in fact the pergola was attached to the building here at the side or backside of the garage, that this line, the longest line scenario being sixty-four point three feet, and the height of the garage and the height of the pergola factored in, the setback dimension of that highlighted purple area does not meet the algebraic setback requirement for that. So, instead of going forward with an attached pergola, we have a detached pergola, either scenario would require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. And so, for full consideration or disclosure, there is, as part of the overall scope of work, there's this deck replacement. So, everything highlighted in brown is where a deck once was. And then, part of this overall project was for the deck replacement to be permitted. And so, all of our review regarding the deck is fine. So, our focus is mainly on, again, the pergola highlighted in purple. It's adjoining fireplace, and then there's these low walls that come off of the fireplace. And then, there's a hot tub here that shows, it has a surrounding low wall around the hot tub as well. So, here we have some images from the applicant who did a really good job with explaining kind of the lay of the land, the intention of the property owner, and some of the challenges that they faced with making sure that the drainage and the grading all stayed, you know, within, within reason in moving forward with this plan. So, here's the existing conditions, looking at the back of the house. This is that existing deck that I had mentioned. And so, that will be removed and replaced with a new deck, roughly in the same, same location. And then, from that relative same perspective, this is what the overall proposed landscape improvement project entails. And so, just for some context here, this is where the raised deck stairs would be located with the landscape wall here, and then this is where the proposed wall would tie into the, the fireplace to the left, which is out of view because it's behind the arborvitae, and then the pergola structure here, which will be constructed about four feet off of the existing house. This is just an aerial showing that same, same perspective. This is a hot tub that has decorative wall surrounding it. Again, it's similar to when you think of side yard fences that the planning commission is required to consider for approvals. Walls are the same thing, so this just so happens to be in the side yard, these walls here. So, like fences, they require screening and approval from the planning commission. And so just another perspective, looking over the house. And then some color images showing, um, the intent of, of this project. So here we have a four foot dimension, if approved by the planning commission today, uh, this will be on schedule for the zoning board of appeals next week, um, for a dimension closer than twenty feet to the, uh, primary residence. And then another perspective showing, um, a perspective from the, uh, the, the deck, looking towards the proposed pergola. If you call your attention to the review letter, it mentions the, uh, height of the pergola, uh, to be twelve feet, the pergola's actually nine, um, but at one point, the way that we thought of the, um, the fireplace or the chimney was that that was incorporated into the pergola, and so we just, uh, neglected to, uh, make that change to nine feet. So, uh, as far as I'm aware or understand, the, um, the height of the chimney is twelve feet, the height of the pergola is nine, um, so what you see here is about an, a twelve foot, uh, extension of the height of the chimney and then a, a nine foot pergola. This is looking underneath the pergola towards the, um, accessory structure, that being the fireplace, and then again, these two walls, um, these would be two foot walls, and then the walls that are around the jacuzzi, um, are three foot. Three foot is the maximum, so when you have a wall or a fence, fences can go up to four feet in the side yard, walls can only extend up to three feet. And then these offer some perspectives for the landscape screening. This is from the neighbor's view, um, from the driveway side, so again, this is what we looked at for when the original proposal was to connect it to the house. It's this line or this plane of the house is too long, too high, and too close to the, um, to the property line for the algebraic setback analysis to work. And if looking from the driveway towards where the proposed improvements are, this is the screening effort, um, that applicant put forward. This is, um, materials that are proposed, high format dimensional flagstone, uh, the color is bluestone, um, high format belvedere wall, and the color of that to be limestone, so this is the color palette and the materials palette that's proposed. And then these are just images of, uh, conceptuals or inspiration for what the intent, um, of this pergola and fireplace, uh, is to look like, but more specifically, the pergola, um, features on the upper left here and the fireplace, uh, structure on the lower right there. And then the landscape plan for screening, we talked a lot about, um, efforts to make sure that, um, because it's a detached, uh, accessory building, that it's adequately screened from both the street and neighboring property owners, and so, um, a line of arborvitae, uh, seven feet high, will be added to some existing foliage along the property line, uh, to screen from the adjacent property, as well as from the street. And that sums up, um, what's being proposed here for planning committing, commission consideration being, um, the pergola structure, pergola building, um, and the walls and fireplace. Yes?
You got, your, your whole team has done a really, really, really great job at, um, at, uh, having them, uh, follow all of the rules and, uh, coming up with fantastic screening, and then even showing us all the viewpoints, I think this is just really fantastic job on your team's part, really great.
Okay, we have the same problem with it extending four feet beyond the wall of the house, but it's so well screened, I'm comfortable with it.
Great, thank you. We have a presentation by the, uh, city engineer, um, but the applicant is also here to speak if there's questions for the applicant.
There you go.
Uh, the applicant is proposing, proposing some drainage improvements to go along with the pergola, um, so I will go right to that slide and point to the drywall, uh, that they're proposing in the rear, um, of the yard before it gets into the wet area in the back, so this should help with their additional impervious area and help to capture water on site, uh, before it runs off into the rear. So, we're very comfortable with this additional stormwater improvements that they're proposing.
Question? We're all very familiar in this city with that one hundred year flood zone, so, um, you know, they're, they're, they're changing a lot of the, the topography of that backyard now. They're, I mean, when they go in there and they start moving and everything and putting the, the bricks and the, and the hot tub in and all of that, so what I wanted to know is, we're assured, they're not pushing more water back in that floodplain zone?
Correct.
Where are they pushing it to?
Into their drywall.
Into where?
Into this big yellow triangle, rectangle area.
What are the arrows indicating?
So the arrows are indicating where water is currently going. So the lot is split where half of the water flows to Hunter's Crossing, to the road, and then half of the property flows to the rear. The patio there is already proposed, so they're replacing the patio, but that doesn't change the area there, so we're concerned with the new pergola area, which is in this corner, so adding some additional coverage for the water in this area was the focus.
So, that you're moving all that water to that yellow section?
For the new area, correct.
For the new area, correct. So anything for the new area is moving down into a drainage there, and that does not go into the back?
Correct, unless it overflows, but yes, the intent is to have it stop there during a typical storm.
What about when we don't have a typical storm? I mean, we all know what this is, this issue. This is a big, this is a big issue for the city, this one hundred year flood zone right there. So, we need to make sure that we are not putting any additional water in that flood zone under, so, um, so like if you went back, Eric, I like that picture you showed of what's existing right now. Right here. So, this is what I'm concerned about, this, this is all gonna be built up here, cause you're putting a hot tub there, you're building a platform for the pergola, all right here, so you're building up all the way here, and you're telling me all this water from this then is going down to that yellow zone. It's not gonna go draining to the backyard.
That's the intent. And you have all that new, um, uh, greenery to suck up the water too, yes?
Is this, is this house in the subdivision, um, that includes that new, um, retention basin on Kensington? The whole subdivision. And does, does this have, uh, does this drain into that, uh, retention basin?
Yeah, so that's off the screen, further down here.
Yeah.
Please see the, see the Kingsley Trail?
Yeah, so...
That's right in back of it, correct.
Well, the retention basin that I'm thinking about is one right on Kensington, right?
Yeah, and Hunter's Crossing, is that the corner there?
Yeah, and so this property ties into the storm, uh, system that ultimately finds its way into that newly excavated reservoir, right? And you've done the engineering to conclude that whatever, um, the flow is, that's not gonna be increased by this project?
So we haven't looked beyond the site, but based on the area that they're proposing, we feel this infiltration basin can accommodate addition.
Okay, so there is no need to consider any additional water being contributed to the, uh, that basin, and all the consequences that the city's aware of as a result of that new system?
Yeah, so we didn't look beyond just the specific project here and how to improve what they're specifically proposing.
Leo, what was behind the garage before this was installed, do you know?
Probably a...
What, was it a patio? I guess, I'm trying to help you out.
Yeah, the patio is staying.
So, at the end of the day, there was water coming into the site in this, in this area, and so, the water, you've still got the same condition in terms of water, so it's really, it's some added hard surface?
Correct.
But it's not adding any water, and you put in this drywall, which is going to collect any added runoff. The change in the coefficient really isn't that great here, right? That's probably what you want to say, and so it's really not going to create any more water going into that detention basin, which has been a problem in the past.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Which answers your question.
Yeah, and, and, and I don't wanna get into the, to the resolution of the litigation, but is there any, um, provision in that resolution that calls for any stipulation or indemnification or recognition of this property owner, uh, what it's doing, consistent with how that case was resolved?
No, because the case was on private property, and the water flows back and forth, and, um, there was just, nothing that would, uh, required any of the neighboring properties to get involved in some sort of agreement with the city.
But isn't that, isn't that, um, basin connected to that subdivision with a requirement that that whole sub participate in its maintenance?
Yes.
And the litigation doesn't, so this project wouldn't tie back to any resolution?
No, because that court order didn't really have anything to do with what we accomplished or whatever that was.
Okay.
It wasn't for the city to be involved in that sort of agreement between a subdivision, uh, homeowners association, it wasn't impactful on what we did.
Okay, so there's nothing that is connecting that case and its resolution to ongoing development and approvals and site plans and...
No.
Okay.
We were concerned about that, to be honest with you, to a certain point.
Okay.
So, I, you know, Will and I live this, um, a lot of people do too, um, so what I, was, on that catch basin, what, I know we cleaned it up, and I know, you know, but what was the subdivision's ongoing maintenance agreement, or is that just a one-time, one-and-done and it could happen again?
Well, there was nothing in, in the, uh, the court order, the, for the agreement that, uh, anybody in that subdivision would have to be involved, uh, in cleaning it up, or it's all, it's all up to them and how their relationship, uh, whatever relationship they have with the homeowners association, because to be quite honest, behind every single one of those homes, there's lots of debris and things that need to be cleaned up, it's all private property. So one of the first things we did as a city is we locked behind people's homes and said, everybody's gotta clean their homes up here, this is part of the problem. And so that part of the problem's still there, that they should clean behind that, I don't know.
Well, is this one of the houses that should be cleaned?
There's probably, yeah, there's probably debris, uh, fallen trees and cut down trees and, and things that are preventing the natural flow of water behind those homes, it's all private property. So that, that's, uh, probably was a contributing factor, but what was, what, uh, how the city got involved in, uh, cleaning up that pond and dredging it out, um, that's really sort of solved, you should go there so far.
But the city's engineer, you're not, you don't see any connection between this project and the proposed, um, new water course, um, and any connection with, um, cleaning up the property and removing impediments to the natural flow, that was nothing that you looked at?
No, again, I guess we looked specifically at what they're proposing here and how to mitigate that specific water with the proposed project.
So, again, um, and I guess I look to our city attorney again on this one, um, if part of the issue, we have an issue, you're familiar with it, this one, um, in this motion, is it possible to say that we recommend they clean up part of that, their backyard? They recommend they do that, I mean, they're doing all of this, and I, and again, when you say a normal rain, we don't have normal rains, we have heavy rains sometimes, and I just don't want this to get flooded again, make it get worse than what it was before, based on the fact that the homeowners created it, and then the city again gets another litigation. So, I just...
Before we do that, um, I, I think you need to give consideration to what you're talking about when you talk about cleaning up areas in the back of these houses. If you were, um, so let me bottom line this, this is a really simple project. Am I, am I, would you agree with that, Leo? This is a, a simple project that really, from a drainage point of view, is really not going to impact anything. You had, you had a surface, and now you're putting in a hard surface, and there's different coefficients that you use when you're figuring storm drainage, and storm drainage, uh, where the, where the surface is absor- absorbing the water, then it's not gonna flow quite as quickly, but the water's still there. And so now what we've done, and what the engineer has reviewed, is they installed this drywall that's going to collect this, this stormwater, which isn't any added stormwater, it's still the same stormwater, but it's gonna collect it, and so where maybe it didn't run off quite as quickly before, cause there was vegetation like grass, that sort of thing, now it's gonna be collected in this drywall. So at the end of the day, by the time it drains off, it's not at all, and I'm assuming the city engineer did their job, um, it's fair to say that it's not going to impact at all that area in the back, right? So, there is no impact. Now, what happens is, if you go ahead in the back of this one house and start clearing out debris and a number of other things, you could, you could actually create a worse condition. You could change the condition, you're changing the lay of the land, so if all of a sudden you go into the back of this site and start clearing out trees and all sorts of underbrush and that sort of thing, now all of a sudden, the water, and I've never walked back there, though I'm familiar with developing property, and if you start changing what's on this site, it could impact this, the, the property that's downstream from this, because now all that, all of a sudden that water is now going to, um, sheet off more quickly from this site into another site, and there's really no telling what, so unless you have a collective plan to do all these sites, to go in and do one site independent of everything else...
It won't work, okay.
Could, I, I wouldn't venture to say it wouldn't work, um, but I don't know that it's a good thing. Would you agree with that, Leah?
Yes, I, I will say one of the, when we refer to debris too, is some, just, um, some logs and other things that may jam up and end up downstream into the pond. So I guess when we're talking about cleaning up the area, it's just making sure there's not loose debris there that travels down and ends up into the pond that was just clearly, um, recently dredged out and cleaned out.
Is this even, is that a stream, that it could even do that?
There is water that flows through there that eventually ends up into the pond. So I guess I'll clarify, when we say kinda clean up, it's fallen debris, it's not taking out trees or taking out underbrush and stuff.
So, um, and actually, having walked back there, getting back there would be difficult right now too, because you've got, it's, you've got all the vegetation with the leaves and everything else, so...
Okay.
I think Leah's conclusion, the engineer's conclusion, that this is not impacting the water is the important element? And you're willing to say that, right?
We are, yes.
Okay. Susan, does that make you more comfortable?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I understand.
All right. So, any more questions for Eric and Leah? So, is the applicant? Would you like to come up and tell us what you're thinking? Let us know who you are.
Sure.
Hi, my name's Ellen Yerkes. It's always a pleasure to share what Antonelli Landscape is working on. Our designs are created by the collaboration of myself and the homeowner to decide on the best layout, features and materials to accomplish the project's goals. So we are presenting to you just that. I can comment on the current conversation of drainage. There was plenty of surface there in the backyard. We're rearranging and coming up with a better layout with all these amenities and so forth, but only really including another 1.3% of impervious space. So what the engineers asked us to collect all that... In some ways, some may say it's overkill, because it's actually going to collect more than what the addition requires. So we're making sure not to add to the current problems of the site. And I appreciate the presentation Eric and Leah gave. That's told a little of the journey. We're currently in construction of the deck and built-in grilling counter. So we would ask your approval for the remaining area in the project that we've presented today for the pergola and fireplace. We are doing our best to, of course, screen it, as you saw. I provided those graphics for you to see from the home aside him. Behind him, obviously, there's plenty of forest, and the street view is accounted for as well. But he has had his neighbors sign off that they're also agreeing with the project. I think we have several signatures, including the one directly behind on each side. So we look forward to your consideration. If there's any other questions that we can help cover, I'd be happy to.
No, and I think explaining to us that it's just a 1.3 percentage more...
He's still within the allowed coverage as well.
Not at that, just that it's 1.3 because of what the photo, the way the photo was, and you're not superimposing it. I think that's really helpful.
Thank you, sure.
Any other questions? You said that you collected signatures. Is that something that you have documented?
Did you not receive...
They're right here, in the packet.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that.
So the 543 Kingsley Trail, it's the person directly behind him?
Yes, I can let the homeowner speak if...
Yeah.
It would be acceptable if he wants to, if you have any input.
Is there any questions here?
Oh, I guess.
Just who did you get signatures from?
They're all right here.
The neighbors.
So directly behind me, directly to the left, to the right, in front, and I think about 10 other signatures.
Fantastic. There we go. And that's what this backyard is for. That is why we've drummed it up. It's for entertaining and gathering, and it's going to be a nice space.
You did the right thing by doing that, by the way.
Yeah, that's...
I commend you on talking to your neighbors and making them aware of what you're doing.
That means a lot to the commission.
If we could have more of these, this would be very helpful.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that has comment on this? Okay, so, we've got three items here.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Great. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request of the property owner at 534 Hunter's Crossing for approval to install a side yard fireplace and pergola with the drywall to catch the newly created runoff and the sufficient screening. And subject to the ZPA approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. She beat you to the punch. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay, good luck with your plan.
Beautiful plan.
So... The next item is the planning commission will consider the request of Stonycroft Golf Club for approval to complete golf course renovations within the 25-foot natural features setback.
I have to reveal that my husband and I are members of Stonycroft.
Okay. So, does that mean you're going to recuse yourself at this point?
I don't think I need to, I can be very open to it.
Okay. Okay. So, Eric?
Hey, our next item is 1960 Stonycroft Lane. This is the Stonycroft Golf Course, which is embarking on a master plan of renovations and upgrades to the site. This was received from the city in two phases. The reason why it was broken up into two phases is because one portion of the property or project requires analysis and consideration by Eagle. And so in effort to kind of keep things moving along, those were separated out, but we're taking them all together today under consideration, under one application. So, the site is zoned A2 and A3, and so primarily, the activity is occurring out in the expanse of A2 along the, what I believe is a tributary to the Rouge River, and some drainage that occurs along this area. And so those are sensitive wet areas that have a 25-foot natural feature buffer along the actual natural feature itself. So the overall site plan shows the pink area, which is 25 feet on either side of the stream. And then towards the southeast end of the property is a pond area. And then just for context, this is where the main amenities are, where the clubhouse, parking lot, and the like. So, the way that the plans were received is that we have a breakdown of different sections of the golf course. So what's highlighted in purple in this little inset is the overall area that we're looking at in terms of the overall site. So for this segment, everything that requires consideration from the planning commission is highlighted in red. That's where the encroachment into the 25-foot natural feature setback is occurring. And again, this is just general maneuvering of land, alteration of land. It's as minimal as possible. So in this instance, it's 87 square yards. This is the area that is part of the Phase Two. Over here, where there's a curve in the stream, this is 195 square yards of activity. And then to the mid-south side of the property, there's eight square yards, a little sliver occurring within the natural feature setback. And then the far east, southeast, this is along the pond area. You can see the different areas highlighted in red that are within the natural feature setback area. So that's it in a nutshell. Again, it's just the alterations of some maneuvering of the land for improvements to the terrain on the golf course. It's kept minimal, and per the ordinance, you know, what's disturbed is to be replaced and kept as natural as possible. City engineer can discuss any drainage or grading-related issues to this project. Excuse me.
I don't really have a whole lot to add to this one. They don't have any major grading impacts. They are... Have applied for their Eagle permit to do all this work within the floodplain area, so that is a requirement that we would make sure that they receive. But other than that, we don't see these improvements having any major impact on stormwater. They have their natural drainage... Their drainage areas already. It's just some minor work in that area, so...
Question, since I'm new to this. Does Eagle follow back up? Make sure everything's fine? Is that part of, they get the approval of Eagle, and Eagle does the follow-up, that everything that they said?
Yep, before they close the permit with them.
Okay, thank you.
Required.
Thank you.
So Eagle will be monitoring the work out there?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Eric or Leah? Is the applicant here?
I'm sorry?
Okay. Do you guys have comment, or you're just here?
I'm just here. I don't have comment.
Okay, why don't you come out?
Tiam Sujack, Party Engineering. One comment, with a lot of arm-twisting from the golf course architect. We're increasing the volume of the floodplain to by about 94 cubic yards. So, as far as stormwater management goes, we're actually making more volume available for the area with the work. That's my only comment. I know you're very concerned about it and just want to bring that up.
We know that area very well.
Thanks for offering that.
Thank you.
Are the golfers okay with that added water hazard?
Everyone except for Karen.
Yeah.
Anyone else in the audience have comment on this?
My name is George from Fortin, New York.
Okay.
I'm in the house, we go back there. Is there going to be any structures placed?
Are there any structures being placed?
Sorry, but I took the restroom.
Yes, it was approved.
There was a plan a couple meetings ago.
Two months ago?
To... Oh. So...
Who could show you?
So it's roughly this general area. Sorry, the laser's not working.
I'll help you out.
Yes, thank you.
Existing shed, right here?
Yeah, it's in that general area. I think even a little bit further east, a little further back, yep. To the right, to the right. Yep.
Can... Since we don't have those photos right now, since that was two months ago, and this gentleman came all the way in here, can you explain to him what, why he can't even... He won't be able to find that restroom on the course? How you landscaped it?
Part of the... But we did have a shield in both from up there as well as on the north side. So the structure itself is only about 7 feet by 12 feet. So it's a rather small structure. And it is going to be in that location next to that existing storm shelter. And then we looked at the property line from existing storm shelter up north to... The river was about 200 and 250 feet plus in addition to what the property was before. So we looked, I think it was closer to that 100-foot mark from the structure to the nearest home north of the park. But there was a substantial screening that was proposed for the structure. These are part from the last planning commission where it was considered that's just the representation of what it looks like when the approximation went above. So roughly, it'll be the location where that shed is.
That'll be fully screened, correct?
More than we requested?
Any other questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Okay, so, I guess I'd bring it back to the commission for discussion or a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that, as presented, we approve...
Subject to Eagle.
Subject to Eagle, approved.
I'll second.
All in favor, say, is there any other discussion?
Amy, did you get a letter? Are you okay?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck with your project. Okay, we're going to end where we started, which is the request of the property owner at 684 Falmouth for approval to install a fence in the side yard in a grading variance to construct a pool and a patio. And this item has been in front of us now twice. And the last time was for the same items, but it was tabled so that the applicant could consider the comments of the planning commission and make any necessary adjustments. And so they're back again. Eric, why don't you give us a...
Mr. Chair, I just want to acknowledge, I live in the subdivision, but I don't live by the house, so I'm not affected by it. And I feel that I can look at it adjugtively as any other.
Okay, our last item for consideration today is the property at 684 Falmouth Drive. Again, this is for side yard fence segments and a grading appeal. The site is located at the west, southwest corner of Bennington Drive and Falmouth Drive with A3 zoning standards. The property with the floodplain map shows that there's hydroic soils, but ultimately, there is no direct impact from wetlands on the site. So currently, there is a house that was approved last November that is currently under construction. So the aerial is not entirely accurate. And with the construction of the proposed home, the accessible or accessory structures and amenities were tabled at the November meeting so that the applicant could take into consideration some improvements to the requested appeals to the grading, the extent of the grading. So our focus area is here, shown where the proposed pool is located. And then, this is a rear yard sport court. The planning commission at the last meeting in May also had some comments and considerations for screening of these amenity structures on either sides of the property. Just for the perspective of going back to what was originally before the planning commission last year, it was this pool in the rear yard that had the composite panels that were obstructing the pool underneath. And so it was thought that there was too much, too high of a structure projecting out from the house with grading requests that were beyond the planning commission's acceptance. So, with the new plan shown here, this is the current plan that's before you. So here you have the pool. It's relatively in the same location, you'll notice. I think I have a plan that shows... Sorry. The location of the spa within the pool was relocated from the west side to the north. And then the pool terrace steps down more so than the previous version, which allowed for the grading changes to be softened and lessened in this particular area where the grading appeal was most significant with the last proposal. So, the sport court remains relatively the same. And then the side yard fences is what brings this before the planning commission, other than the grading appeal. So, with the updated plan, well, this is the previous. So what we had last time in May was steps down from the house onto the pool terrace. But this scenario created significant grading changes that occurred on the outsides of the pool terrace area.
10 feet?
10 feet. So the planning commission asked for the applicant to reconsider, reorganize, relocate, and reconfigure just with the consideration of grading changes in mind if that can be lowered to the greatest extent possible. So what we have here as the updated plan, again, the spa shifted from a location that was further out. And so that was to allow for additional lowering of the terrace in those two locations, as well as an additional lowering immediately from the house. So that lowers the overall pool terrace. Further down, Leah will discuss the changes into the grading in those details momentarily. Updates to the landscape plan. If you recall, the planning commission had concerns about views into the property from the south, especially as it relates to the proposed sport court, which is fully within the rear yard. But again, the applicant was asked to enhance some screening here, which everything in red is the new updates. Everything in green is what was there before in terms of the proposed land. Everything in green is what was there before in terms of the proposed landscaping. Just to note that because this is in the rear yard, the fence is four feet within the side yard, but as it meanders around the sport court, it becomes six feet to become a ball containment court or a ball containment fence, which is allowed per ordinance. But I just wanted to point that out as a detail to the overall plan. So, over here, you have pool equipment. That's remaining relatively the same. There's extensive landscape screening, both with enhancements to show that there's no, there would be no views of that equipment from the street or from the adjacent property owner to the north. There's an AC and a generator to the south. And again, with the concerns over some landscaping there, the ask was for the applicant to enhance landscaping there as well. So, we feel that they've made effort towards what the meeting minutes articulated at the May meeting. And then, this is the overall change. This is very similar to what you saw back in May. However, the steps down are more significant. There's more of an elevation drop from the immediate edge of the house. And then, at the edge of the pool, you can kind of see where there's steps down in that location as well. So, that takes this whole area down further so that the impact to the grading change is minimized. And then, our landscaping perspectives remain relatively the same in terms of this being the perspective, looking in from the south, I believe. This is more within the rear yard. So, again, the screening is required in the side yard, but this is the intent behind the evergreen plantings along the property line. And then, this is just an example of what the six-foot-high ball containment fence segment would look like in the rear yard. Again, once the fence hits the side yards, it would drop back down to four feet to comply with the ordinance standard. And then, this is a perspective from the north, looking towards the garage and the pool improvements behind the house. And then, of course, the significant landscape planting to screen the pool equipment and the other mechanical equipments at the edge of the driveway. And this is just a nice little exhibit showing that they're meeting or the intent of the ordinance to have immediate landscape screening on the outside of mechanical equipment to exceed higher than the equipment itself. And then, just looking back at the yard map, again, the pool is in the rear yard. The sport court is in the rear yard. The fencing around the pool is within the rear yard, but where it ties into the house, of course, as we see is pretty typical, the tie-ins to the house are in the side yard. So, we just wanted to make sure that based on the meeting minutes from May, that we addressed the planning commission's requests of the applicant. We did meet with the applicant a few weeks ago in order to discuss those types of things. And so, what you have before you today is the changes based on those conversations, so.
Eric, do you have the drawing? You showed us what the original, one of their more original drawings. But it seems to me that there's a lot of emphasis on hiding the pool equipment in that fence, but zero on this side. And I could have sworn they had already taken, they had done a better job before on the air conditioning unit. They have a lot of emphasis on, well, a lot of emphasis, thirty-five arborvitaries, protecting the pool equipment and the fence on that side. But I don't see anything protecting or blocking out the air conditioner and generator. And yet, I could swear they had that before. And now, they have nothing. And this proposed side yard fence.
I thought there may have been shrubs as well.
Now, there's zero.
Yeah, it's odd that none of the side yard fence is screened nor the...
Over here on the south side?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there was additional planting.
We put additional screening along the side for your plus. We didn't change anything by the AC units.
Well, it doesn't show it on here.
We didn't change, I mean, there was nothing changed there. The only changes were the screening on both sides, which originally there were hedges. In fact, the three D doesn't represent, they correctly item the photo right there of the three D images. But originally, there were hedges on both sides of the property, which were large arborvitaries, which were screening the property per ordinance. But then, their last media's requested they have a more naturalized screening. So, that's where we introduced the Norway spruce, the clock maple, service berry, red buds. There's a variety of trees that were mixed in with the evergreens to provide more screening. Now, the angle that you're catching the generator, the AC unit, that was never brought up. We were always talking about the screening along the side property. So, that screening was not an issue until, at least from what I remember, because we did not touch.
It still needs to be screened. It still has to be screened.
We can still screen that. That's not a problem.
And how many Norway spruces are there and how many maple?
Can I propose this?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Maybe what we'll do is... Do you have more to say at this point, Eric?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Maybe we'll let Leah offer her comment, and then, we're going to bring him up.
Good idea.
Because, I mean, you make good points about screening this mechanical equipment, because that's required by code. So, we should do just that. So, Leah, go ahead.
So, there is a grading appeal still before you for this property. Previously, there were fills up to ten feet and cuts up to six feet proposed. Since the last time we met, they have scaled that back. Eric did a good job of explaining some of the improvements they made, such as adding stairs to push down the terrace area around the pool. So, I will show what we had last time we met was the previous request that did had up to ten foot of fill in the rear. What's before you today is modification to that, where we have areas of up to five feet of fill, which is the dark blue color. Then, as we get to the lighter blue, that goes down to three to four feet, and then, down to the green area in the two to three foot areas of fill. So, this plan, I do want to apologize, we didn't have an updated engineering drawing at that time. So, HRC had overlaid a cut fill area on the previous plan. So, like Eric mentioned, the spa is now moved. They do have some additional steps. So, this is not exactly correct matching with the landscaping plans, but it does give you a view of the areas that they are proposing to do fill, which gives us a nice kind of side-by-side of what previously was proposed versus what is before you today, the areas.
But not exactly, right? So, do you know how much farther out that this goes now?
So, the areas we have highlighted, the areas we have highlighted are the areas of fill.
You have the proper fill areas.
Yep.
But where, how far does this, does this structure go out differently from where it is right now? It's not just the moving of the hot tub, is it?
We just didn't move the hot tub on the rendering.
So, you're going to say that that's still the back line, that that's in the right place?
That's still where you're at. We just wanted to show you this. We didn't redo a clock plan and move everything around. We just proposed the cut and fill on this. We just didn't move the spa and add more stuff to it. But that is the actual cut and fill that we're doing, and that's the extent of the...
The walls are still in the same area. It's just that the whole thing has been pushed down with the addition of stairs to accommodate that. I was just going to say, as far as drainage goes, this is the exact same plan that we reviewed the last month, where they do have additional dry wells proposed, as well as trench drains in the back, French drains in the front, swales. So, this does remain the same and is consistent with what you have previously seen. The new item is the modification to the grading.
Anyone have questions?
I do for Leah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the property is kind of like this. Property is quite a down pitch to it. And previously, there was all kinds of, underneath the power line, all kinds of trees that took care of the water that came into that area. And a lot of, and then, go back to where you have drains and stuff there. This is all at the highest part. This is at the, a lot of the higher part. But doesn't a lot of the water go down to the, where you see sunken bridge drain? Isn't most of the water going down there and there aren't, there don't seem to be drains down there, just at the highest point of their property?
Correct. The water will still flow towards the rear. The intent of the drywall is to capture the water up here. So, they have a drain that's proposed under their cement or their patio area to capture the water before it overflows to the rear and bring it to the drywall. Similarly, this area is for all the water kind of on the side of the house before it has time to flow down to the sunken bridge drain in the rear.
Again, it just, oh, and I don't know if I'm being stupid about this. I feel like I'm looking at something that's the opposite of what it should be. You're increasing the, we have a large pool deck. We have a large three basketball court in the back. And we knew that this was a wooded lot. We knew that a lot of water, just the way it comes in the front, comes down, but comes down from this side, too. It has a hill coming down from this side also. There are hills all the way down. It's a lake martel. It's a low point in that neighborhood. And you have drains in the front of the property. Who came up with the idea of putting drains in the front of the property? They came up with that and said, we've done enough there. We have one French drain here, one French drain there, and one drywall back here. Is it, I would be more concerned with having more drains in the back?
Just because the water's going to flow fast, right?
You're welcome to request that they add additional drainage in the back. Do keep in mind that when they have to put in drywells, they do have to disturb the land and make swales to get the water to those specific points. So, a lot of times, we do see them closer to the home because that's where they're modifying the topography already, not necessarily disturbing the topography towards the rear of the yard. But you are welcome to request that they add additional in the rear if you'd like.
Were all the trees ripped out in the back?
Yes.
So, it's already disturbed?
Yes.
I don't know specifically which.
Well, where's the power line on here? Okay, so, the power line that runs the length of property?
That?
That power line there? Yeah, so all of those trees, all of those trees were cleared for this construction site. If homeowners didn't mind, I'll look at a bunch of scrub trees underneath the power line. It just seems to me that we're not, that we're not taking into account that they are, that they're putting a great deal of hardscape where there was not that much hardscape before, and they have drains mostly in the front of their property. And we have no idea what's going to happen to the other properties around it.
Commissioner, let me ask this question, your question another way. So, Leah, can you give, can you give Commissioner comfort that all of the storm drainage that's created now by this site is going to be addressed and contained so that it's not impacting any properties downstream or outside of the sites? Because to Catherine's point, you've got a lot of development now that's occurring here. And so, we want to make sure that we're not creating any additional runoff condition that's going to impact properties that are downstream from this. Can you give her that comfort?
We feel comfortable that this will address that, especially with the properties to the rear. And there's plenty of space behind the home that can accommodate some additional runoff before it hits the sunken bridge drain in the rear. So, yes, we feel comfortable with what they're...
That was part of your review?
Yep.
What is the sunken bridge drain?
There's a river stream that runs behind the property. There's a water course back there.
And that also goes up to other people, will you show us, that goes up to other people's, the back of other people's properties?
The back, yes. Kind of the rear of these lots here. And I believe it gets out to down here, the water. It's all connected.
Is the sunken bridge this brown line you're saying?
Yeah, what's the brown line?
What's the brown line?
No, the brown line is, I think, sanitary sewer.
Well, there's natural water that runs all the way down here. Goes under the road, goes over here, and goes all the way over here. How come, that's a natural running, like, creek? How come that's not wetlands?
It's part of the drain that was identified back there, I think.
I mean, that water goes under the road there. There's a big culvert that we own, the city owns, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, we own it. So, but it comes along that whole ravine area, goes under the road, the culvert does. And I guess, I'm a little surprised because the person on the other side of the road, he has the culvert, couldn't do anything when it backed up and flooded his yard because it was wetlands. But now, how come we're letting them, we're saying it's not wetlands and they can put their trees there?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't, they're not getting into that area.
Yeah, if you're natural, it's a natural feature setback. They have to be so far, right? Okay, that's what I thought. Where's the house that has the culvert? Is it across the street? If you go, can you go back to the... All right, so, here's the subject property right here, right?
Yep.
This house right here.
Can I see Susan?
Okay, this is the big ravine right here. And there is a natural water feature setback on this ravine. And it goes all the way through here. And then, right here is a culvert that goes under the road that we own. Tell me if I see it wrong there.
No, it's, yeah, city.
What is that road? What is that road? This is right here. This is Falmouth, right here. Okay, good, okay. And this is Bennington. And then, it comes through and it runs down here. And then, it runs back of all these houses right here, which this road is kind of back toward. And then, so this water just naturally goes back that way. And where's the subject property again?
Right there.
It's like a test. So, it shows where the water flows around just that property? Right here. Goes to the south, goes to the south. And then, you can see it. Yeah, I can see it. With kind of there, it flows that way. And the front of the house is... Right here on Falmouth. Which Dave, that was my other question to you, is are we incorporating, because we just did these roads a few years ago and we put in these water and sewer, water, right, did we put in there? And so, we put, this is, remember this one, we had a lot of water running on this side? So, are we tying in at all on this side?
There's itching that ties into the wire course that's to the south of the home.
Right here, right here?
Yep.
Okay, so we don't, we're not tying in at all here?
No.
So, Susan, that shows what the property looked like before this development. It had, it had all of that, all of that, all those trees, all that thing slowing down the water. Now, where's the water going to flow? Do we know that yet, Leah, with all of that stuff, which again, is...
Yeah, I guess I'm not, I don't know what happened with the trees. You'll have to ask the applicant.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. No, I'm just saying, now with that, has that changed any of the water flow?
The water should still flow to the rear and down with the same course that was identified.
But their property isn't flooding right now?
Not that I'm aware of.
Leah, is there something you would recommend in the back part of their lot to mitigate heavy flow of water?
They could add additional drywall in the rear of the yard, towards the rear.
But when we're proposing to do that, you've reviewed this now and you're comfortable? Just so the commission understands.
Yes, I'm comfortable with this, but you are always welcome to add additional.
But right now, you're comfortable that what you're capturing all, because to their points, and I never saw this, apparently, there was a lot more vegetation back there. So, you've got to make the commission comfortable that all the water sheeting off this property is going to be collected and it's not going to impact the properties downstream.
Yes, I still feel comfortable with that.
Because just adding more drywall... Because just adding more drywells in is just, you know, it's just adding stuff in. We should do it with a purpose.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
So, there's been a couple items here tonight about the drainage, and I try to work hard with HRC. As a matter of fact, he wants to talk, and Commissioner O'Sullivan knows, in the letter states that they, they have a statement that says, based on a detailed analysis of the site against city ordinances of best engineering design practices, we find that proposed improvements that have no adverse drainage impacts on the subject or surrounding properties. This project will be adding two drywells in total, but they're doing, but my whole intention of this is that we wouldn't be having all this discussion about what, you can always add things, but I don't think we should, with part of people that add things, if the engineer believes that this mitigates any sort of impact. And so I guess I'm concerned that, I wanna make sure that our engineers are correctly relating to you, that they've done their due diligence. And so this, these, this drawing is not only reviewed by you, Leah, who else?
Jamie reviews it, as does another woman in our office.
Jamie, this isn't, this isn't personal to you, and you know that, right? It's not personal.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, okay. So Commissioner McCarthy was gonna, was upset about a 1.3 increase in an area where there's, obviously, they've had water issues and the like. And then we had the neighbors all agreeing, hey, I think they're doing a lot, they overkilled it on their drainage thing. We're not, we're talking about a property that has an actual waterway in the back that collects water and for the city, that could be a huge problem for neighbors on both sides. And whether the city manager wants us to have discussion or not, at least we're having discussion openly on this, that we were concerned about that. And what is, what's the worst thing that we're gonna do? Is say to all the neighbors, if there's more water going on the property, we required a couple more drains in the back, understanding that there was that much foliage there before. The foliage is gone, and they have the sunken, whatever, tunnel drain, you know, waterway in the back, you know? We took that into account. I don't care.
I have a discussion, but I just wanna base this, all these things on the engineering review, because we have engineers that review this.
Yes, yeah, no, because I would have.
I have a discussion.
Because you know who's gonna be the first person that they, if we have any water, when I'm on my five mile walk through my subdivision.
James calling me.
I get it. They're like running out of the house yelling at me, so, yeah. I think it's worth it, just to make sure you understand what was there, what's going, where's the water gonna be going? Because this is obviously a fairly larger home, and we run into this a lot in the city, where we have 3,000 square foot homes, and then, I don't know how big this is, but they put in 6,000 square foot homes. And the water's gotta go somewhere. It naturally takes the water and it has to, so homes have to, and at the end, I'm gonna actually bring another subject up, but homes, we have to be able to mitigate, because we're disturbing the ground and we're taking away water where it, or land where it drained. And so we gotta make sure, that's the only thing, Leah, that we really need to look at. I hadn't, I'd like to, if we think it's okay on this draining, that's fine, but I would like to address, go back to Commissioner O'Jay's comment about the screening. You know, our ordinance, and I know it by heart, because I was told it by heart from Dave, we don't allow any side yard fences. Like, there has to be screening, to me, around the old side yard fences, even though you have them on the outskirts. And it has to be screened, and generators and ACs have to have all year long screening around, and the whole thing needs to be, the whole thing needs to be covered, not just part of it, not just whatever. So there needs to be screening around the generator and ACs, and there needs to be screening if we allow these side yard fences, there needs to be screening around those as well, not just on the outskirts of the, and I'm sorry, I wasn't here last month.
And again, why can't the fence just go straight back from the house, as it should be, and as we asked the clients on Hunter Crossing?
What fence?
The side yard.
The jawn.
Jawns out. And why can't it just be around the pool? Or I just don't see the purpose of all that fencing.
Yeah, I don't either, it's a good point.
So, that's a fair question for the applicant. There's two separate issues. Actually, there's three issues I'd just like to address. One is this discussion about the storm drainage. I don't wanna lose that discussion, because to the city manager's point, there was comment in this letter about the adequacy of the storm runoff. At the same time, I think this commission properly discusses and addresses these changes to the property. Because what happens is, city engineer, in their best attempt, is trying to address runoff. These people live, the commissioners live in the neighborhood, and they may see things that the city engineer doesn't see. And that's how things surface. And so that's good discussion. As the city engineer is doing their analysis, that's why I keep on pressing the issue. I haven't seen your analysis, but I've seen lots of engineering analysis for stormwater runoff. And I'm assuming that you're doing calculations that are basing your runoff calculation based on the changes in the topography and the surface and everything else that's containing the water. Is that true?
However, do remember, this is not a commercial site, so they don't have to follow the same regulations as residential sites do. So we are relying on the information that the applicant is providing with us. But yes, we run some very simple calculations to ensure that what we're saying is appropriate.
Will you say, what does that mean?
Wait a second, wait a second. Wait, 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 wait a second, I'm talking. Okay. So, but simply put, where we have a hard surface, if the whole site, and I don't know what it looked like before, it does today, I know what it looks like today. But if it was a smaller home, and there was just a small area of hard surface, and now we have a larger home with a much larger area of hard surface, the runoff is gonna be greater, because common sense would tell us the water is sheeting off of the hard surface, and so you've gotta prepare for capturing this water, and try to make this pretty simple. And so you're doing that calculation, right? Okay. Just so that the commission understands. And so, simply adding in a drywell, it's, I guess, you've gotta figure out, well, where are you gonna put it? It's not just, well, let's go put, let's go add something. You gotta have a plan. And so you've developed a plan where you're comfortable today that there's no more added water coming off this property than was before, that it's not creating anything downstream. True?
Correct, correct, yep.
So, so that's first. Good discussion, and we should have that discussion. But there's comfort in the letter, and so we'll always be able to go back to HRC, because we know where they live. Not personally, but we know where your office is, and we'll be able to capture that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You said we're all a little bit.
So, a couple other issues, though, that surfaced here. So you're talking about the mechanicals. Those need to be screened. And so, pardon me, sir.
Sorry.
So, and we'll address that, because to your point, Susan, those by ordinance need to be screened. And so we'll discuss.
Fully screened. Fully. You're right.
And so we're gonna discuss that, because I heard the same things that you just heard. It's unclear to me whether or not there's screening or not. By ordinance, they need to be screened, and so when the applicant comes up here, we're gonna understand that. Third issue was the fencing, and there we can discuss whether or not we want to put more fencing in or less. Here, a couple meetings ago, Tom brought up the issue of, well, do we want fencing around the whole property or just around the pool? And so we can discuss that. So those three issues I just wanted to tackle. And so I think with Eric and Leah, I don't know, unless we're, unless someone has more questions for them.
I have a question about the APD of mechanicals. So the ordinance actually requires the building official to approve, and that's what's laid out in the letter. So, in my opinion, that probably if you approve the site, the site should also be approved based upon the approval of the building official. But actually, in the ordinance, the mechanicals, the AC and the generators are required to be in the rear yard, this is a side yard. And who makes that determination? Depending on the site owner, it's the building official. I'm speaking clearly from ordinance standards. I don't, I guess I could ask our senior attorney if the planning commission really has any say in that, the way I read it.
I don't think there's a question about whether there's a say in it. We're just saying if it is in the side yard, it has to be fully.
Right, but the building official will be the person.
So let me just sort of cut to the chase. So you're sort of both right. It's a fair question to ask right now.
Yeah.
Since the applicant's here, are you putting screening in? Because if they're not, regardless of what the building official says, these are side yard installations, and I guess.
They could install, so the building official approved it, you have to do it. I'm just saying, I think the proper way would be to say, if you do approve this, that the building official has to approve that.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Are you also saying that we have to approve that they have other mechanicals in the side yard? And they should have them in the rear yard?
Well, I think the building official is the person that proves that. And now, I don't know if it's a necessity to be in the side yard, and I suppose they can discuss that with you, but at the end of the day, the building official is the person that has to approve that in the side yard. And he doesn't always approve in the side yard, sometimes, because they're required to be in the rear yard for ordinance, and there has to be a reason why it has to go in the side yard, and he makes that determination.
Doesn't this planning commission make that determination as well?
I don't think so.
No, actually, so Dave's correct. So it's the plan, it is the building official that makes the determination by code, but at the end of the day, the stuff has to be screened.
I understand, but as long as he approves it and he puts the screening, so he knows that it has to be a purpose, at least a foot above any mechanicals, and/or any sort of evergreens that has to be a foot above the mechanicals. He's supposed to commute either of those two things, and you can explain why, but you should also explain why it has to be in the side yard and not the rear, because I think that's important for our building official.
Mr. City Manager, why would, do some applicants take the time to show a screening of their, of air conditioning units and generators, and this applicant is not? Is that because it's up to the building official to make sure that it's screened? Or it's just?
Well, I don't know, maybe they can just discuss it. My point is that ultimately, it's the building official that makes that determination. And they will use these minutes from their testimony, why they're gonna do it, for the building official.
And normally, our practice in reviewing a new plan would be to have the applicant call out immediate screening. And so when looking back at the letter, comment number two, the first bullet point under that statement says, for the south yard, the AC units, the screening is that there will be three foot high wall that's immediately around the units, and a line of the 11 to 12 foot green giant arborvitae along the south property line. So the wall that's around, that provides immediate screening of those units is there as a proposed screening effort, but I think it would have been beneficial if we had maybe a detail showing that.
So I'm correct, before, your plan before showed screening around there? And it's just missing now?
It's on page one, it shows the wall, and it's listed out here.
Oh, do you have page one?
On AC generation for builder, and there's a wall.
It's on the approved architectural plans of the house, three foot.
So I'm gonna propose this, guys. Let's, are we done with Eric and Leah? Because I'd like to get the applicant up here, because maybe they can address these questions. Could you let us know who you are?
David Lubin, architect for Neil Doshi and his family. And first, with respect to the screening of the AC, you can see it is already on the approved architectural plans that were submitted to the city that are being built. It says three foot masonry wall, so that's like done, non-issue, right?
So, so it's screened?
Yes.
Okay, so we all heard that.
It's on the architectural, and you can see it around where it says AC generator, there's a wall that's shown there.
So it's sufficient to just have a wall?
So both the AC and the generator?
Correct.
Okay.
As per code. Secondly, this site, from the driveway to the south side slopes like about 15 feet. So, you know, we've done everything we can to provide as little fill as possible and The other thing is that the previous house that was here was a ranch house that had a larger footprint, not larger than this, but a large footprint, was a ranch. So if you say this house is 6,000 versus 3,000, this is on two floors rather than one floor. Plus, the previous house had a pool with significant hard pavement around it. Third, all the drainage goes to the rear where there is still significant foliage into an existing drainage course, like a creek. So the drainage is basically accounted for, it's not running onto anybody's, anybody else's property, it's following the natural course that it always has.
Trees and such. Yeah, I don't want to sort of treat it rather than that.
Mr. Doshi?
Yeah?
We met your proposed landscape architect last time, he's very talented.
Yeah.
And he's come up with an absolutely, we just, we were asking him to say, could we have this, could we have that? And he was promising all of this, and our problem was the fact that he wasn't hired at that time. Is he?
He's been hired as our landscape architect.
He did, he said he could, he's bringing.
You asked me if I had a contract to do all the work.
Oh, does he have a, does he have a contract to do the work?
I said, how could I do a contract if we haven't been approved to work? We haven't been approved for the work. How do I bid a project?
And that, what I'm telling you is, he did an amazing job.
Sure.
Until the point of, we weren't sure that he was gonna be the person putting it through. But can you say, for the commission, that he is the guy who's doing the install? As he comes up with really good, he comes up with really good compromises that makes the?
Look, at the end of the day, I can't hire him until this is approved, right? I'm not gonna pay a guy to be a consultant to not do work, right? So we're sitting here trying to get it approved. Matt worked with me in another different build we looked at, what, a year and a half ago? So I've had a two-year relationship almost with Matt and Steve. I've enjoyed working with Matt, I've enjoyed working with him and Chris and other members of this team, and once we're approved, we'll sit down. I mean, Matt's spoken to myself and my wife about specific trees, all the trees that he's proposed to you. This didn't, my wife and I are not surprised by anything. We've had these conversations. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have wanted Matt to be here, we wouldn't have wanted Matt to speak if we didn't agree with what he's doing. But I can't hire somebody until.
Mr. Doshi, you and your wife are very behind screening all the areas, you're very involved with him because you've had this prior relationship. That's really helpful information. Thank you.
Sure. Hi, I'm Matthew Olajarsuk with Motor City Landscaping. I'll take on any questions you have.
I'm gonna echo Commissioner Fisher's question. Why are you jutting out the fence? There's no need to.
Well, there is, because where the pool equipment has to be within a certain, it cannot be exceed a certain setback from the actual residents. So really, the only place. So, really, the only place we can put the pool equipment is that location that's adjacent to the home. And if the pool equipment is there due to elevations and the unique lot, there's really nowhere else we can put the pool equipment. Originally, when we had our deck, we had the pool equipment underneath the deck, and it was screened by the decking. There is an issue with elevations on this lot, so really, that is the only place we can put the pool equipment.
So, the fence. I was talking about the fence.
Well, no, okay, the pool equipment, but the fence is also coming off that corner there. So, there's really no way to take the fence around that corner to block off the pool with the pool equipment being adjacent to the house at that distance.
What I'm referring to is this, like, why are you coming out here?
Okay, I was referring to the area by the side yard, by the driveway.
I was talking about this.
Okay. Is there an area, by the driveway, since I was just addressing that, is there, is there an issue with that fence by the driveway?
We'd rather it go straight back. I don't see why you can't push the-
Right.
-pool equipment behind the house. You said you can't.
Are you saying to put the landscaping outside of the fence? Move the fence down to where the pool deck begins? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, put the landscaping outside and put the-
There's a wall.
You don't see the fence from the street.
Yeah.
There's a retention wall right here. Right here, there's a retention wall right along here. So, for us to, you know, you can, for us to put the fence in here in front of the wall, that's where it has to go in front of the wall, right here, so it's the barrier. Now, here's the walkway coming from the driveway at an elevation that's approximately, you know, fifteen foot higher than this elevation. So, we're trying to go from here all the way down here. So, your fence is even plane. So, we're catching the corner of the house right here. We're coming over, and we're putting a gate here through the walkway to come down on the outside of the wall. You know, really, the only other way to be do is come up here, come on top of the wall, and come over right through there. But we figured that that would be, you know, not look great, having a retention wall that's a vertical two or three foot, then having another four-foot barrier on top of there. So, you're standing there, you're looking at a fence that's right here. So, that's why we chose to go up and around and come down to the sports court. This here, right here, where the fence comes like this and around, I do believe that we were putting a gate in one of these areas, and we wanted to have access, so we did bump it out. For us to come straight across, is this what you're, this here is the issue? Is that where that's at? I don't recall, there's a reason behind this. I mean, we wouldn't have just did a jog like that, so-
Or why do you even need any of all that fencing south of the pool?
Why do we need which fencing? This fencing?
Yeah.
Why don't you need the pool fencing? But, and you have a sport court fencing.
Right here?
No, why don't you just take your fencing and go right here, go pool, like that?
Well, because there's a bunch of steps right here, there's an elevation.
Well, don't, I'll go up to the steps and then put a gate or whatever.
Because there's windows right here. There's viewpoint windows. So, if we were to look out at a fence that's around right along here, there'd be a viewpoint, there'd be a little red on the fence.
No, go above again, like the same thing. You're putting the fence on the outside so the, of the landscaping, as opposed to putting it on the inside of the landscaping.
The same theory you have at the top, at the north side.
Yeah.
Did you want the fence on top of the wall? Because I don't really know.
No.
I mean, that's just going to add to its height. We have the fence in front of the wall, so you're looking at a vertical fence that's four foot, and you're looking at a wall behind it, so the screening is behind that, you're not seeing the fence.
Your plan does show the gate is, or right on the, on the bottom? The plan does show that the gate is right next to, right on that corner of the building, right there?
Right here?
Yep.
So, in regards to, I don't see, I mean, we're going to have a ball containment system around the sports court. So, that's why we came into the sports court and came across, because there's already going to be a fence in here, around the sports court. So, we came this fence into here, which then there's a sports court fence. I guess we could come off of here and try to come across and hit this corner.
That's what they're asking?
Yeah.
It's a six-foot walkway, but we would prefer that was a landscaped something, as opposed to a six-foot walkway. And there are fences.
The area there, designed there for the kids to run around, like, I don't want to add the landscaping with the proposing to cover behind the sports court.
I'm sorry, it's a side yard fence. That's just the, that's just the ordinance. They do this to everyone, it's not you.
Okay, so-
Your plan's beautiful, but they do that when no one gets to have a fence in their side yard.
So, you want the fence to come straight across here?
That you can see from the street.
And that's for the ordinance of, you don't even need, corner house to corner house, going back with the fence. Am I right?
No.
No?
Because it goes from the back part of the house.
Matt, you can put the fence straight across.
We'll put the fence straight, that's fine. If you come from here, straight across here. So, is there any issue with you doing that?
So, the wall fits still in the side yard.
That's still in the side yard.
Yes, but, but-
But it's not visible from the street.
It's less observable if he goes straight back.
Oh, okay.
We're still approving the side yard fence.
But there's also the one up front. I will have to tell you too, there's an association that's pretty strong. How do I know that? Because I just did an addition, and they were all over me. So, the plans have to go to the association as well. We, the city, cannot enforce the association plans, but I just want to just mention that verbally to you. But I would think, so where should it go, to your point, well?
If it just goes, we still got to approve it if it's in the side yard, but to your point, if it goes straight back from the house, it's less observable, right?
You can't see from the street.
Yeah.
I think that's a good thing. It's a good suggestion.
For neighbors not to see.
And sometimes they just have people have their gate going this way. You've already done that, so that makes it that much easier. I just don't, I just don't know how, how their fence could be changed on the other side.
On the north side?
I don't see a solution there. I don't think I see it from this-
Nobody will see that fence, because there's so much foliage and everything.
There's vegetation in front of it, so the fence is actually behind it.
So, no one's going to see it?
No, it's on the outside. I'm not as comfortable.
I don't have a problem with that one, because the other one, I think your association will not have a problem with that one.
Yeah.
There you go.
Perfect.
Don't jag it, just make it straight across.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know why, I mean, there's a reason behind it, because our design team, but I, it's been quite a few changes, so I can't speak to why we did that.
Is your plan to really do this vegetation? Because you've got a sport court, an AC, and a generator all on that south side, so it just seems like you should put as much, you know, screening in there as possible.
Which area are you referring to?
The south side, yeah.
We talked about mixing in a bunch of different higher evergreens and not just doing a row of arborvitae. And I see, how many spruces are there, and how many?
Yeah, we have-
Maples?
That's where we have the maples.
Just one, or?
No, no, everything's labeled there. There's five maple, five-inch red point maple, five units. There, in the front corner of the house to the left, there's a three-inch Armstrong maple, three of them. There are twelve-foot clump maples, there's ten-foot Norway maples. It's all on the plant list. If you could go back to page, page one.
Are those things that screen?
So, if it's a dark circle, it's that species? A red, no?
I'm looking for this sheet right here.
Because you showed this side, but I don't see.
Okay.
I always see your arborvitae.
So, the, within the plan, screening plant material scheduled, Emerald Green arborvitae. So, basically, it gives a breakdown of all the plantings that are scheduled on this, and there was a calculation of the amount of plantings we have to put in there. But the Emerald Green arborvitae at six foot, there's thirty-five units, and we can, this has all been submitted, but it's on the slide here. Green Giant arborvitae, there's twenty-three units. Another Green Giant arborvitae on the other side, there's twenty-three units. There are red point maples.
Matt?
Yes?
Can you go back to doing what you did when you were here last time? And just, just kind of show us on the plane, what you're proposing, what you, Mr. and Mrs. Doshi are proposing with regard to plants. They can get on, onto that grading later, but I have a hard time with that, that photo you have up there of the sport court with smaller bushes in there.
Sure.
And I don't think you're actually proposing something like that, because I don't think Mr. Doshi wants us kids to look up all the neighbors that are applying, right? So, I don't think that's what you're really proposing, so can you just kind of show us? We know what the, what the, you were proposing a lot of different green giants spruce with different spruces.
Well, so, right here, it'll point out that there's a ten-foot Norway spruce added. So, that's that tree right there. There's another Norway spruce in here. But we're giving you quantities, so you can actually look up the quantities versus looking at the print, because the print would get very, very busy.
It's okay, that's why I'm just having you-
The neighbors that were concerned were on the other side, so I just don't see where the Norway spruce and where-
No, I wanted to do that.
South side, south side.
Want me to go over this side?
That's where all the neighbors were complaining, from that side.
Okay. Right here?
Because they're elevated above your property.
Sure.
And, yeah.
So, ma'am, just to sort of cut to the chase, so we can see the Green Giant, you're putting in twenty-three of those, right, along the south side?
We're putting in twenty-three units.
Okay.
I don't see a number.
So, that's, that's all of those. Okay, now, I don't know how they compared with where we were before, but-
Well, there, I don't, I'd have to go look up.
Okay, but they are where we are now, so-
Correct, so there's, per my specification, along both sides, there's twenty-three. So, there's total forty-six arborvitae that are eleven to twelve foot on the property.
Is those Green Giants?
But to the mayor's, so, to the mayor's concern here, in per ordinance-
It's a real concern.
What the ordinance says, because we're doing this because of the grading. And so, wherever we approve grading, it gives the commission latitude to develop a landscape plan, or plan, to screen what's going on. And so, the concern is to make sure that we've got adequate landscaping. And when we last discussed this, we were adding in vegetation, and we were changing the species to add in a couple of other species. And so, I think what you're doing is you're adding in the Norway spruce, but to the mayor's question, she's unsure what you're adding in, so it's not like you're just adding in one Norway spruce. All of those dark dots are Norway spruces, correct?
There are a total of four Norway spruce, four red bud, four clump maple, and six service berry.
All on that side?
So, your, your plan doesn't-
And then, added purple sides.
I'd like to know what's on this side that the neighbors are complaining about.
So, why don't you repeat that again? So-
On the north side and the south side.
Just on the south?
It's not numbered on the panel.
Okay, so, we basically took everything and split it in half, okay? Between this side and this side. So, there are a total of six service berry, there are going to be three service berry. There's a total of four Norway, there's going to be two Norway. There's a total of four red buds, so there are going to be two red bud. There's a total of four clump maples, so there are going to be two clump maple.
Wait, let me stop you. Ma'am, excuse me a second. So, you're saying you're just adding in two Norway spruce on the south side?
We're adding in three service berry, two Norway spruce, two red bud, and two clump maple.
So, honestly, I'm looking at your picture, and I'm seeing more than two dark dots there. So, I would-
Well, there's all the Green Giants in there.
No, I'm talking about those that seem to depict Norway spruces.
No, there's a Norway spruce right here.
Right, and then, keep on going. I would see that as one. It looks like there's another one to the, to the left of that. So, so you're just adding in two Norway spruces in that range?
Yes, the weird, yes.
I don't-
Okay, well, just so, I guess I heard you say something different, like, just a minute before that you-
Well, how is a service berry, are you around a street?
It is not, it is not. We, so, it's not a evergreen. So, that's where the service berry come in. We're wrapping the Green Giants around it, so we add, and then we're putting service berry in there.
Cool, cut it up.
To make it more natural.
Interesting. I appreciate that. That's great.
So, it's not, it's, no, so if you have a deciduous behind it, it's going to be an evergreen.
Okay.
So, it's creating that more of that natural screening, just like if you put in a maple. This maple's going to be very, very large, like a clump autumn blaze. Maple's going to be very large, but it doesn't create evergreen screening. So, before, we just had the hedge line, so now we shifted everything around. In fact, I, I would have to go back and look at my counts from originally. I think we still have the same Green Giant counts, but we added to it. But it probably reduced by two, because I put an evergreen in evergreen, I probably took out two Emerald Greens. Anyways, that's, that's the tree count for that.
I'm kind of concerned about, because I think there's two neighbors here. There's a neighbor to the south, and then the neighbor to the south.
There are three neighbors lined up behind.
Yeah, it's lined up behind there, and I just don't see a lot of, it's like, it's right in that little area, but it's not through this back area there.
Which area are you referring to?
Above the Green Giant, right, Green-
Yeah, going here, like this whole area. You've got all these neighbors over here that are looking at basketball.
Straight in at the court.
We can add some plantings, if you guys, that's the old rendering, this is actually the new rendering.
Can we go back to the other illustration or something?
Is that what you're seeing? That's the sport court, right? That's the other-
Go back to your, let's, let's go back. Okay, let's stop there a second. No, go back to the one that shows the vegetation. The one we were just looking at, that's, okay. So, if I could help a little bit?
Sure.
So, I know what I heard the last time we reviewed this, and, and what you agreed to, ma'am, when we were discussing this, you were going to, and I don't remember how many Green Giants, I'm going to assume you were going to put twenty-three in there before, along the south side? And I remember the discussion that you were going to add in some additional Norway spruce, more than just two. So, if the concern is the screening, it's nice that you're putting in red buds and service berries, but if anyone knows what a service berry looks like, it's not providing any In a red bud, not a whole lot more. So, maybe-
But very nice for the mix.
I mean, nice, but if you're concerned about screening, then you'd want to add in a couple more Norway spruce, right? And maybe that gives you the comfort? I don't know.
I would think at least three more.
Does that give you more comfort?
Yeah, I, I, if I'm, if I'm Mr. and Mrs. Doshi, and I'm building this, this pool area, and I have a pool there in our back, and I had a sport court in the back, I don't want all the neighbors above me looking into my backyard.
I never do.
Right?
That's why you put blinds and coverings, so they can't see inside your house either.
Inside your house, right. So, I, I have a, I have a strong feeling that I like what Matt has done with regard to breaking up all the greenery, but I really think, all said and done, I don't think that the only thing, Ms. Doshi, you don't understand is that it's not just people seeing into your property from this side, it's these neighbors on this side looking into, into your pool area and into your, into where your kids are playing in their basketball area. So I, I, I see more green giants around the, the sport court and in an area to block off the privacy of the pool than I do throwing a whole bunch of green giants on the edge of the property when the sport court wall is, how high?
Six feet, max.
Six feet?
That's Matt.
Just, just...
Yeah, but the natural tree line with the mix is, is nice.
It's nice, but I...
We could push more trees from the front to the back. I mean, at the end of the day, I, I don't know the number that's going to cover privacy, right? I think Matt's the expert that'll sit there and tell me that nobody can see into my lot, because it's my house. I don't want random people looking into my house, whether it's the inside of the house or the backyard. I work eighty hours a week, I need some peace and quiet, and I can't even want it to be a serene area. So if Matt thinks it's twenty, I'm going to defer to the expert, right? You guys asked me twenty minutes ago, are you bringing Matt on? Well, if I'm not trusting the expert, then why am I hiring Matt, right? We're not making sense, so...
Ms. Doshi, we just don't want to pin, pinhole you, or, or pigeonhole you, what, is that the word, pigeonhole? Pigeonhole you into keeping all of these, saying you've got an approval to, to, to build this because we said you're going to put all these Norway spruce and these green giants on the corner, when really, I would like you to have a lot more leeway than that with a talented landscape architect that you have, that you are going to be blocking from this neighbor, and from this neighbor, and from that neighbor, looking into your backyard. I know it's per ordinance, but I just don't want, I just have a hard time tying them into, I want you to put one as opposed to other people that you are watching.
No, but respectfully, I really appreciate that he is adding a mix of the service berries.
I like it.
So the view of those people above him is not a row of, uh, just a wall of arborvitae. It's, Bloomfield Hills is wonderful how they mix service berries and maples and spruces. And I really appreciate your efforts to do that. I think we just need to add some more Norway spruces on the corner of the sports court. So this person up here isn't looking down and watching you play basketball, or your son play basketball.
That would actually, that would be the solution to take the...
Yeah, exactly, it's exactly what the mayor is saying, right?
To take the existing plan that we have and maybe add some additional vegetation.
Spruces.
Okay.
Not more arborvitae, we've got a lot of arborvitae.
Okay, so, um, let's, let's...
So, Ms. Doshi, that's, so what the mayor is saying is basically, well, can you tell we all want you to be able to build this?
Yeah.
Move on, we, we're all on your, we're all Bloomfield Hills residents, we're all on your side.
We need one more, one way, one more Norway spruce, Matt. Put a Norway spruce in. At the end of the day, I have complete privacy, I can, don't want anyone looking into my house.
So maybe if we can agree, if maybe we...
So I'm going to reiterate that, if it's two Norway spruces, if it's forty Norway spruces, whatever it takes, that I have complete privacy. That's what I want.
So, so let's take, let's take the existing plan that we have, and let's agree on adding some additional Norway spruces. We're only putting two in on the south side, and that's a long, how long is that, how long is that distance? From the front of the yard to the back?
I can't say.
I don't have a certainty of entire distance.
It's, it's, it's fairly long. Let me put it to you this way. To add in some added Norway spruce?
At least three.
Okay, that would be a good mix, right? You've got plenty of room to do that.
And particularly, at least one or two on that corner from, so that person...
Okay, so...
The gap there.
We can say that, but I think, I like what Mr. Doshi said. If your direction is, he wants complete privacy, make sure there's complete privacy. So we can say three up here, but you may say, you need five.
That's, that's what I've been saying since day one.
Right, exactly.
That's why I hired the expert.
And, and if the expert can't, we can't put a tree that close to a sport court because the roots will break up the sport court. Then we have to, we have to, we have to say, great, then you're going to find that on the site. You've got, all your, all your brains are going to get together and find that. And then, so, what, but they're still going to give the mayor what she wants, which is, which is a spruce cutting off this, this two spruces cutting off this viewpoint from the neighbor. Yeah, might not be that close, but...
So, let's, let's, one at a time. So, ma'am, what you're hearing is, we're going to keep the plan as it is, but we're going to add some Norway spruces. So what would you suggest we do, like, along the, I'm going to say the, the left, that's the west side, but for our purposes...
Southwest corner.
Yeah, so what would you suggest we do in that area along the south side? In term, right now, you have two in there. How many more are we going to add to provide everyone with comfort that it's fully screened?
Well, I can add about three more, but, but to be honest with you, when I come out there, like, if it does say maple here in this area, I, I look at it, I tell my guys, no, I want this, I want that, because the view of the neighbor, or this. So I do put things in different areas.
Yeah, but with all due respect, once this is approved, yeah, you don't have the latitude to sort of mix and match?
No, what I'm saying is, if I were to call an evergreen right here, and we have a gigantic tree right here, and it's not going to work because of the canopy, and the viewpoint of this neighbor is right here, it wouldn't make sense for me to put it here. So I may move it over, but I'm still keeping the quantities the same, I'm just not. So, which goes to my point of back here, okay, we have maples. I have large maples in the back. Now, you put evergreens in...
Let, let, let me stop you, ma'am. No one's really concerned about that. Everyone's mostly concerned with the south side of the property.
Sure.
That's heavily vegetated up there. None of the neighbors that, that came in here live up there. It's the neighbors that are to the south here that we're primarily concerned with. So can you show us where you would propose to put in some added Norway spruces to provide us more screening? Mind you, we've got to come up with a plan that we can reduce to discussion and a description in the minutes, so we're all on the same page. So the city manager, we'll give him authority, once we decide on this, to make sure it happens. But, we're going to use our existing plan, we're going to add in, we're going to focus on the southwest corner. And we're looking, we see where the, uh, the basketball court is. So we're going to wrap it from that point. No, up, 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 up a little bit further, there you go. So we're going to start maybe, I, I think there's a neighbor, probably, because this doesn't lay it all out. So we're going to start there, yeah, I don't know, right where that arrow is.
I'd say about five evergreens.
Okay, and maybe you're going to wrap them, you're not going to put, you're not going to cluster them all together, so you'll just wrap them all down a little bit?
No, what we would do is we would put, you know, an evergreen here, evergreen here, maybe an evergreen here. Move all this down, put an evergreen here, so we space out what we want.
Plus, you have to go up.
Okay, so you're going to add in five Norway spruces?
I'd say about five.
Okay, and...
Let's do it.
Okay.
I'd like five again.
We're, we're for five again.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, wait a second, wait, wait, you, you, almost, almost. So, um, so we've concluded on that. Is there anything else, we're satisfied, we, we brought up this issue about the screening of the mechanicals. We know there's a wall there now, so that's all settled. We're satisfied with the fence, right? Because that's going to be part, part of the motion.
That's going straight.
Right, so that's going to run straight back. And, I think, um, in, I'm not sure, is there anyone in the audience?
And city manager, the approval of the city manager.
Wait, I want to see if there's anyone in the audience. There's a gentleman back there, I'm not sure, he might be a neighbor.
Um, I have neighbors.
Okay, well, see?
The southwest property.
Okay, well, gee, could you let us know? Why don't you let us, who, who, who are you?
I'm Andrew Watson.
Nice to meet you, Andrew. Where, where do you live in Raleigh?
Going back to the picture of all the properties that have been...
Can you do that, Eric? Give us the aerial view?
Go back to the other one.
See, we're watching over you, Andrew.
Yeah, but I'm here.
Okay, I think your wife was here last meeting.
Yeah, my wife was here, I was here the one prior. Our neighbor's here immediately to the south, in that prior meeting.
Okay, good.
But I live here. And I planted, um, probably over thirty trees along the east side of that property. Some conversations with this commission several years ago, when we built the pool in our technically side area.
Okay.
One concern, and we've discussed this, is about screening on the south side of that property. You know, the immediate south side towards the east or the front of their property, our neighbors immediately adjacent to us have a lot of concerns about that. They've planted evergreens along their property line. What they've done with their backyard is a different conversation for another time. But, um, I think, you know, Neil and the applicant is trying to address that concern. As you guys are talking to, the concern about the southwest portion of that property.
Yes.
That's where we have concerns. Because our property looks directly up to his property. So having some sort of screening for his privacy and for my privacy, I don't need him looming over my kids as well either, would be beneficial to try to achieve that. Where I'm curious, and I was curious what your guys' thoughts are, I heard our engineering colleague's assessment of drainage. Is, there's a creek. So the, the, the drain comes this way, as the mayor pointed out, under the road, comes to a creek under the power lines, and immediately turns southwest and runs behind our property right here. And there's a creek here. And so the water already comes all the way down this way. And this area, whether it's talked about or not, turns into a swamp or a marsh, especially when you have the aggressive and heavy rains that we see in the F nowadays. And I'm curious about, you guys, I don't know how much conversation there's been in prior meetings about the variance to approve the fill beyond two feet of fill. You know, I know initially it was ten feet, and now they're proposing five feet of fill in these areas, which is really a drastic change to that property. And is that going to cause increased drainage into that creek? Into all of these downstream properties down kind of that court out onto the lot there? Where water is a problem back there. So when we were building our pool, the neighbors immediately to the west of us had a lot of concerns about drainage in the back of that property, which we spent a lot of time and investment addressing the drainage on the northwest part of our property to ensure that when we built that pool with a retaining wall, that we didn't increase the drainage to our downstream neighbor. We had a lot of conversations with the commission here as well, too. Uh, to the point that we moved our pool dramatically closer to our house to not even go beyond two feet of fill to try to achieve the commission's concerns about drainage in the backyard to all these properties. So I was just curious what the thoughts are about how aggressive the fill is on this higher elevation property and the downstream ramifications of drainage to all these properties downstream of that court.
That fill is primarily under the pool deck, that's the fill. It's not the existing topography.
So, to your question, when, when we look, when we review proposals to fill a site, we look at a number of factors. One of them is the topography of the existing site, the proposed site. And then we look at the surrounding properties. And then we determine, is there something unusual about that particular site that would give rise to a request to add some, some fill to the property? And then, if there's a decision that there's some unique part of this, that maybe it makes sense to do that, then we look to the site and look at the surrounding properties and decide, what can we do to the extent there's some fill that's added that we can protect the neighboring properties? And so we're at a point, as we looked at this, originally, they proposed to put in ten feet of fill, which is a lot of fill. They have sort of a unique site, from the standpoint of there's a lot of fall to the site. I think the engineering report says it falls like thirty feet or something. So there's a lot of fall. So it's somewhat of a, it's not a flat piece property. So they've got sort of some unique aspect to it. They took their original request of ten feet and brought it down now to five feet. And with that request, now we're looking at and saying, okay, if you're going to do that, how are you going to mitigate the concerns that the neighbors have regarding what they're going to see? And so, we're sort of at, if you look at the, the chain of events, sort of the critical path, that's where we're at right now. And so, when your wife was here a couple of months ago, we listened to her. And partly because of her comments, we're here today, and they've made the changes that they have. And now there's question about, well, to the extent we're going to screen this, and they've got a lot of screening in. Originally, two months ago, there was a suggestion that they provide some character. Put some in something other than just one species. And so now they're proposing to put in these Norway spruces. And right now, the plan shows two Norway spruces, which really isn't a lot in that overall stretch. At least that's one guy's opinion. And so now what they're doing is they're, they're offering to put in another five or so. And with the consideration that we're looking mostly at the properties on the south side, they're going to be focused, we're focusing on that area, and that's where we're going to propose that the placement occur. So that's the background, and we've got a plan. We've got an, an existing plan right now. And so now what we're going to do is, we're listening to you, we listen to them, we listen to our engineer and our planner, and now we're listening to you. And so now we're going to come up with taking that existing plan and adding in these additional Norway spruce. And we're trying to pinpoint exactly where they're going to land so that when it comes down to someone making a motion, they're going to be able to specify what the plan is. So, once it's installed, the city can come through, and the city will come through and review what was installed against what was approved to make sure that the two meet. So that's, that's about where we're at.
Mr. Chair, I think what I'm hearing from the resident is the same concern that I was talking about, too, is the water on that area, because we see it all the time. Leah, I'd, I'd like to propose, Leah, is there any way that you guys could see, look into, and talk with the resident about an additional mitigation of water in that lower level? Because it does, it does flood, it's like a lake back there. And then it all drains into all these people's backyards, so, um, I...
I think it should be part of the approval, personally.
I do, too. So are you, are you okay with that? To have some, do additional mitigation back there?
I think it'd be, I think that sounds very reasonable.
Okay, so that should be part of the proof, uh, proposal. And also, to, and, you know, I, I told you, I live in the subdivision. I watch them very respectfully redo a house and make sure they really talk to all the neighbors. So I think they're asking for the same consideration from this resident, this applicant, that they're going to be screening all that area, which was a natural wooded area for them. And now is, they, they can look and watch everything he's doing right now when this is back in his yard. It's that open.
And that's, that's really helpful that you explained, your, it just didn't come out with, with your wife. You explained to us why you can't put a bunch of trees to block that, because it's a, it's a swamp.
It's a swamp.
Yeah, it's a swamp, so you...
I already planted, I watched it.
Yeah, you plant as much as you can without being in the swamp. So you had to move your pool right up next to you. There's a line there, which is the, uh, uh, wetlands line right at the back. He can't plant anything, so it's up to, um, the neighbor for his privacy reasons and your privacy reasons to plant as much as possible. And, and you, you welcome Mr. Doshi onto your site to look over? Have you?
Yeah, I haven't had that conversation.
Because, yeah.
So as Mr. Doshi and I have discussed previously, I think we're both on the same page. We both value privacy. I have no desire to impede him to have whatever he wants in his backyard. Just like I think all of us residents of Little Falls prefer and want to have.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that, really two main issues is one, screening, or views, and then two, drainage.
So, if...
The concerns that we have as neighbors of this, of this...
I'd like to interrupt on one thing. I guess...
But I wanted to do a...
Because I heard one new part of this discussion, which is there's water collecting in this area. So, if that's happening, that's sort of a, we haven't discussed that. So is, is this like a natural, I didn't see the site before, I've heard about all the vegetation going down. I don't know what was there. But if we had a site where it was a lot of vegetation, and now all the, the vegetation has been stripped away, and now we're collecting water, and, and we have...
That's a little bit of a misrepresentation. The city called me the day, John Rogers called me the day I bought the lot. He said, "Clearly, it was part of the vegetation." He walked me through, but...
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me a second. So, um, I'm, Andrew, so you live there. Is there water collecting at the southwest corner of the property?
Of their property?
Yeah.
I, I'm not aware of their property lines. I don't think there's increased water collecting there since they started the project. I will validate my, my future, my neighbor with that. The concern is with all this additional hardscape, terraces, fill, is that going to cause major issues back there?
Well, I, I've got a...
And I'll defer to, you know, the professionals when it comes to this, but that's a major concern of this elevated property with, uh, elevated house with a multi-terrace backyard, hardscape, sport court, pool, multi-terrace hardscape. How much is that going to increase drainage to that southwest corner of that property?
Okay, go ahead.
I have some questions. So, um, I think part of the analysis here, which should help the city engineer, is, how long have you lived there? At your property?
Uh, we have owned that property for over four years.
So were you there when it was treed and had not been...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and so you had an experience with the water accumulation with the trees there, and then now you're... now you're experiencing water accumulation without the trees there? And as the engineer mentioned, the data that she's working off of is to some degree anecdotal from the application from the homeowner and their consultants. But I think it's important to consider if we're going to request dry wells and other apparatus to accommodate the water that used to be being pulled up by the trees, but they're not there anymore. It's going to take a long time for that to recreate itself naturally. So in the meantime, I just wonder whether that's something that, and maybe you did contemplate that as part of your analysis, but I think it's fair to make sure that that issue, you know, having a property that's defoliated, is considered for any additional dry wells or rerouting of stormwater, just so there's not an exacerbation of marshes effect.
Leah, can you address Will's concern?
So I will say, there is a 20-foot drainage easement that runs around the back of this property and then in between the two properties. So it is appropriate for this area to collect the water.
Naturally.
Collect the water. It is naturally where the water is supposed to go. So it is okay if in this 20-foot easement, there is water back there. That is the intent of where it should-
And you took into account what you were saying before. Before on the property, for your purposes, before on the property, how big was the ranch that was taken out? How many square feet?
Over 2,000.
Okay. And then they also had a pool?
Yes.
That they had, did they have hardscape there, too?
Yes.
No, that would-
Oh, would that-
The sport court is pervious. It's not-
It was on the north side of the park.
There's considerably more hardscape. Would you agree?
It's considerably more hardscape.
What percentage more hardscape that had?
It's just a matter of-
You guess.
Okay.
A lot.
To maybe bring this to some closure, so now we discussed the storm drainage, and then we sort of set that aside as addressed, but now it resurfaces. So maybe with this added, this new concern, and to Commissioner Hostler's point and some of the other discussion, maybe you just can't just haphazardly put in dry wells, but maybe as a part of this application, you come up with a solution to add in a couple more dry wells, or you review this a little bit, not that you didn't do it carefully the first time around, but to look at, because if you do put in another dry well, that's another place where basically it stores water. So basically, we're going to be storing water. And so you're storing water in one place instead of putting it at the southwest corner, you're going to store it in this dry well. So maybe you look at that, and whoever makes a motion, they can attach that to the motion, and they come up, you come up with a couple other places that might mitigate whatever added concern, because if the water was collecting down there and you had all these trees and everything, no one knew about it, right? But now, if it's all cleared, now you're just going to have a big puddle down there, which isn't going to look good, and it's going to, you're going to have, you're going to end up with fragmody and stuff, you know? And so maybe that helps us, that helps the condition.
I think we need to be a little more concrete to give the neighbors and give everyone's obvious concern that one other apparatus is added to dissipate the water the other direction or hold the water, or like something more concrete in our approval that says they will consider an additional-
We can say additional mitigation.
-apparatus of their mitigation of the water draining towards the same corner.
There's so many different ways you can accomplish it, though. It would, and it would depend on the size of the area which you use for the dry well. If you put in two versus one large one?
I'm not saying it's just a dry well. I'm saying it's just some kind of, it could be a rain garden. It could be a French drain. It could be-
Oh, I thought you wanted us to specify.
No, just to specify that a choice of one that is the best one according to the experts is added to dissipate the, or pull the water away from the obvious-
And it could be a couple.
-lake. It could be a couple. At least one.
You have not been in these meetings, Mr. Doshi or you, sir, when the poor people that are trying to build their house at Lake Martel have to put an entire drainage area, and it's not of something they're doing. It's not of something they're doing. It's the topography of Little Hills where they've decided to build. So it's not, we're not singling out Mr. Doshi. We're, it's just where he's decided to go.
Waterways.
Commissioner Hendricks, yes, sir.
I was just going to say, what if our engineers worked with the applicant's engineers and just kind of look at the whole site again and see if there, what is something that they could do? I would hate to just, you know, make a motion or a requirement to do something unless there's some consideration, real consideration.
Well, but to that point-
Like, Martel is a problem. Martel is more-
Yeah, I was going to say here.
But-
No, but I'm just saying.
But to the point, I guess, and I hear what you're saying, Dave. Leah, can you confirm that if you did add in another, a larger rain garden or another dry well or two, it's basically going to collect water that wouldn't end up down there?
Correct. It won't hurt them.
Right. So maybe as part of this review, because right now, they basically confirmed and stated for the record, this doesn't exacerbate, doesn't make worse the condition that we have.
That was before the hardscape, though.
Yeah, but you don't have any of the hardscape in the house.
No, I think she considered all that. No, they would have considered-
The neighbors say there hasn't been more, but the hardscape isn't in it.
But her analysis would have considered that. But so, so we can add more, so adding more in isn't going to hurt, and maybe as part of this motion, we do something proactive to reduce the runoff more from the site. And that's sort of like a nebulous sort of request, which I know engineers don't like nebulous stuff, but, okay. So is that satisfactory to everyone?
Ask the resident.
Well-
I would say, the experts' recommendations for drainage is acceptable to me.
Okay.
I think my, our concern as future neighbors is more the screening, which my future neighbor is addressing, which I appreciate.
Okay. All right. So, so we've heard from, is there anyone else in the audience that has a comment? No. Okay. So, yes, sir.
Having said all of that, I'd like to move ahead with a motion.
I'd like that.
I would like to yield to the mayor so that the mayor could give us a motion that would encompass all of the subjects that we've talked about for the last two hours.
Okay. I'd like to move that we approve the request of the property owner at 684 Falmouth Drive for the approval to install a fence in the side yard going straight back, not jutting out on the south side, and a grading variance to construct a pool and patio. They've agreed to add five additional Norway spruce to the south side of the-
Southwest.
Southwest. Southwest side of the property to totally screen the sport court and additional parts of their lot from the neighbors to the south. And to confirm, we would like the fence on the south side to go straight back from the house instead of angling further south. And all of the landscape is per city manager's approval of the final plantings, and we'd also appreciate a further review of the water containment and/or dispersment efforts to not pool towards the southwest side of the property.
Can I suggest one thing?
Please do.
Instead of mentioning just the sport court, it's for-
The entire-
The pool area, because that's where the grading occurred.
And the pool area where the grading occurs.
Can I do one more?
Sure, please.
Do you mind? Well done.
Well, I've off the cuff.
I would like to add in there, though, that we do add, I would, I'd like to amend it that we do add another drainage back there, because as you said several times, it can only help. So I think that would be good. And the second thing is, is that not just five trees, but the expert in the back of the room, that he, that they understand that the south area and the southeast corner are fully screened with green foliage year round. Okay?
Southwest.
Southwest, sorry. No. Yeah, southwest. Sorry about that. Southwest corner. Yeah.
That border, the entire border.
Yeah, that border that. Okay.
Okay. So, Lauren, it's your motion. Susan is trying to change your motion, so you have to agree to what?
I agree and second her motion, her continuation of the motion.
Well, no, it's your motion. So she's-
I agree to adopt mayor pro tem.
Okay.
Susan McCarthy's modification.
And even though you started this.
I shall second.
Okay.
Does the clerk have any questions, or are we all set?
Amy, are you clear on that? Yeah.
Thank you.
Is everyone good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. There you go. See how simple that was?
Yeah, it was a basic case.
All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your efforts, too.
All right. So that brings us to a conclusion of our application items. Does anyone have any added comments?
I do. I'm sorry it's been a very long night, but I just would like to propose one thing. We, as we have seen this afternoon, that are, and in many others, planning commission meetings, we are dealing with some fairly large projects, residential projects that are large. They're a lot larger than, you know, they're big houses on these lots. And currently, and Leah made a point to it, she said, they're doing what only we require as residential's, okay?
Versus.
Versus what it would be-
Commercial.
Commercial. But we have a, we have a, we have a property that's about the size of a commercial building, bigger than a commercial building we have, and yet their drainage and all of that is only, our ordinance is only written for a residential. So my point being is, we brought this up with the city commission before. I would like to bring it up as an open item for the city commission, but I wanted to let all of you know that I would like to make a suggestion that we amend and look at our ordinance for drainage and requirements by residents if they have a certain size house that they're putting on their lot, so that we can, this gives Leah the ability to fully look at something and say, this lot, this size, you need to put in this kind of drainage requirement.
And so much impervious service.
And so much impervious service.
It's not just a house.
So I would like to make that, you guys are the planning commission, obviously you would be, some of you would be helping us to draft the new ordinance. If it gets passed tonight, that the city commission is willing to do that.
Do we, question, do we run the danger of being anti-rich people?
No, not at all. What we, what we have is we're supporting, you know, we have a situation right now in the city that's, that is, it's flooding an area. That was, that's a problem. We're going to be talking about it tonight at the city commission, and it's absolutely not. I think what it is, is it just is saying that it gives the city employees and HRC the ability to do the right requirements to drain properly on the property. It's nothing to do with anti-rich. It's nothing to do with, it's people who are-
They're welcome to build, I guess, sorry to interrupt, but the rain and the flooding is much more extreme than it was 20 years ago. And the city is, it could cost the city millions and millions in, it will on the Martel, and we have a lot of concerns with remitting, you know, all of this flooding. So we got to get in front of it and ask that the residents, when they're building a house of a certain magnitude, if it's equivalent to the magnitude of a commercial building, that they do the same, the proper drainage and the proper mitigation of that potential flooding.
I have a question, Mr. City Manager. If we've, and Leah, when, when 28, 30 years ago, I moved on to Martel, it was Kevin Adele who had bought, brought that property that we all referred to as Lake Martel, because it's now, it's now a couple whose kids are grown who built that big house up there. But they did something where Lake Martel is. They did some drainage right there, we can see it, that used to constantly be covered, not on the street, and now it's gone. It's gone from their property. Did they connect up to the city drain? Did they, did they, it's big, you can see it right there on the lawn, right on the corner of the lawn. And I'm telling you hilariously, you know, that Kevin Adele was going to build there, fine, sat there for another five years as the lake. Now there's no lake there. And yet I watch the neighbor on the other side deal with all kinds of water, and now he has in his own fish pond up front where he's collecting the water. There's no, no water. No water's collecting on their site, and they have that drain. What did they do? And they're all at the bottom. They're underneath me. I have to slow down water, but I'm not holding water. I just was curious what happened.
We have looked at it a couple times, and it's one of the last areas in the city that's a, that's a storm sewer, but it's also sanitary sewer combination. And it's, in a 40 acre area, it's the lowest area. And so it drains by gravity, the piping's kind of undersized, and there's a couple ways, a couple things you can do to fix it, so you can create a pump station, pump it up the port, and we can separate those pipes for the, I really think it's just a product of bigger and better homes being built there and more and more water going into the pools.
But is that, is that, is that what they call the drain that you're calling for? Is that a drain that they put there that they're holding water underneath there?
I'm sorry, I don't know specifically.
Yeah, what it looks like.
Jamie, ask Jamie about that. Jamie, I was on the commission with that one when we were building that. That was a long time ago.
They must have had 120 pylons.
Yeah, but they only, they only built there five or six years ago. So I will send you the photo. I will go take a photo of this.
But Katie's right. It used to be a lake that contained that water.
Because Lauren lives, it was down.
It was in the corner, and it didn't bother anyone, because it didn't go on the street. We'd all marvel at the lake.
It all stayed on that property.
But we were happy it wasn't bothering our drainage capability.
But now it's-
Now it's covering the whole, it's covering all the properties, and it's spilling out. So it'd be interesting to hear what, if there's a way to-
What they can look into.
Yeah.
Your retaining pond there.
Thank you. So anyway, no action required right now. I just wanted to let you guys know, and I'll bring it up tonight at the city meeting. The city commission will decide if they want to move forward with amending the ordinance to address that as well as, you know, other items we're running into with challenges with bigger buildings.
I think looking into that is an excellent idea, and so I support analyzing the ordinance to make sure that if there's some distinction between residential and commercial that's interrupting the engineer's ability to thoroughly analyze and make proposals just because one is residential and one's commercial, that doesn't make any sense. So I think exploring the common sense engineering application across the city, I'm all for that.
Good.
I agree.
Sorry it took you so long. Okay, I'll stop.
Any other comments or anything before we retire?
I don't want to be the guy to get out of here before the city meetings start.
All of this meeting concluded.